Welcome, July 23, 2024, City Council Meeting. I'll start with the prayer. Dear God, today's the session opens. We pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city, make it a better place to live and work. Amen. We salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Harry, how are you?
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Mayor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Counselor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Dakota.
Here.
Counselor Getchere.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Eleven present.
Section 2, 2.1, Mayor's Business Communication Remote Zoom Participation.
Mr. Mayor.
Motion to set to place on file by Counselor Mercier, seconded by Counselor Yem. When was the silence? Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for Charles E. Chuck Carney, loving husband, father, and grandfather, a proud lifelong Lowellian from the Swede Village neighborhood. Chuck attended Sacred Heart Grammar School and graduated from Keith Academy in 1960. Chuck went on to attend Fitchburg State College. Charles was a former Pop Warner football coach, scout master of Cub Scout PAC 36, Cosgrove Street Block Party Planner, member of the Ancient Order of Hibernians and the Lowell Planning Board, as well as lead organizer of the Emerald Isle Golf Classic, which supported the wider horizon project of Ireland. He was an avid New England sports fan and proud of his dual United States and Irish citizenship. Chuck achieved much of his professional career through hard work and perseverance, along with a little bit of luck. His most recent professional position was as a Director of Parking Operations with the City of Lowell. Prior to that, he held managerial positions at companies including Raytheon's Digital Corporation, Applicon, and eventually working his way up to become President and CEO and Chairman of the Board of Directors at Davox Corporation in Westford, Mass. Chuck always put others first and cherished spending time with his family. Many people often share stories of how he had helped them in their career or life in general. Chuck leaves behind his beloved wife of 62 years, M. Sheila McFadden Carney, his three children, sons Michael and Sean, and his daughter Erin. He was the loving and supportive gramps to six wonderful grandchildren whom he adored. He is predeceased in death by his eldest daughter, Colleen Carney Bernadini, who passed away in 2023. We offer our sympathy to his family, relatives, and many friends. He will be truly missed. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber to all those who passed away since our last City Council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mercier. Any others? Mr. Clerk, please, Doctor Chambers. Rest in peace.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion to suspend the rules to take item 4.6 out of order?
So we'll do it all at once. We do have something, a resolution that we have people here that wants to be gone. It's 9.1. Do that first, then go to use it, okay?
That's fine by me.
All right. Motion by Counselor Mercier to take 9.1 Resolution out of order.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Noon. 9.1 Resolution, declare August 4, 2024 as BAP state in the City of Lowell, where the full reading is seconded by title. In the motion, once again, to adopt, City Council, the City of Lowell wishes to go on record to declare August 4, 2024, in the City of Lowell as BAP state. A motion to adopt by Counselor Mercier, again, seconded by Counselor Noon. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Dakota.
Yes.
Counselor Getchere.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Eleven years.
Thank you, Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm honored to have presented this motion, and I'm very grateful to my colleagues for supporting this 100% because we are recognizing and forming a resolution celebrating the 50 years in the United States of this organization from India called BAPS, B-A-P-S. Because they say B-A-P-S, it's Boca, Asian, Wasi, Sri, Aksar, Peru, Short, Amswan, Inar, Rayan, but it's too long to say, so we say B-A-P-S. I have known these Indian people from BAPS for over 20 years, and every year, their walk for charities goes to many, many causes. This year, the Tingsborough Police Department was the recipient, but throughout the years, the annual charities walk for over 20 years, BAPS raised funds for Lowell Elementary School, the Lowell Fire Department, Lowell Police Department, former city clerk Richard Johnson's son, who was a police officer that died tragically and unexpectedly, and that year, the charities walk money went to the officer's family. Many times, the money went to the Merrimack Valley Food Bank. It also went to Nature's Conservancy. During COVID, BAPS charities distribute PPE, Personal Protective Equipment. During COVID, BAPS charity also distributed food to Lowell General Hospital for the frontline staff, offered their space to the Lowell Health Alliance for COVID vaccines. I'm telling you, I'm honored to have known them, and I thank them for all the years that they've donated to many organizations and charities in the City of Lowell. So I'm honored to present, have you as the mayor present them with the resolution, which we have to sign because our signatures aren't on it, and the city clerk informed me that he'll have it for them tomorrow, but I understand. We also have a proclamation, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Counselor. Thank you very much for your words, number one. If we have members of the BAPS community, please stand up. As Counselor Mercier did say, we do as a council have a proclamation. The City of Lowell, Carmouth, Massachusetts, by my honor, as well as the City Council, Daniel P. Rourke proclaim, whereas BAPS is a worldwide Hindu denomination dedicated to fostering faith, inspiring service, and promoting a better living. 2024 marks 50 years of service and faith in the United States for BAPS. And whereas, BAPS offers a welcoming and spiritual space for thousands of families, as well as worship, fellowship, communal needs, education, and activities for young and old, creating a true home for the faithful. BAPS offers youth activities that encourage and mold young people to live lives of integrity and character that reflect our highest ideals. And whereas, BAPS in the City of Lowell, Massachusetts, is a proud example of how houses of worship can contribute to the well-being of congregants and also local communities. The BAPS hopes to serve its congregants and the local community with even greater zeal for the next 50 years and beyond. Now therefore, I, Mayor Daniel P. Rourke, along with fellow City Councilors, do hereby proclaim August 4, 2024, as BAP state in the City of Lowell, given its 23rd day on July 2, 2024. Thank you very much once again.
This prayer that we just heard is called Shanti Pat. Shanti Pat means peace. The prayer that we just did was for world peace. May there be peace and well-being in the City of Lowell, in the state of Massachusetts, and in our beautiful nation, the United States of America. On behalf of BAPS Organization, I thank the City of Lowell. I thank the mayor and all the city councilors for their support, their recognition of all of our work that we have been doing for all these years. And we're really grateful and thankful that we have been able to assist so many organizations around in our community and help you make it better, a better place for everyone to live. We're so thankful, again, to the entire City of Lowell, to our beautiful community, and again, to the mayor and council members for continuing support and your, sorry, just support. I lost words. Thank you so much.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
You want to come in?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Leahy?
If we could go out of, if we're already out of, make a motion to suspend the rules to take up motion 4.3 and 4.5.
Second. Motion about Counselor Leahy to take 4.3 and 4.5 out of order. All is fair to say, I oppose, motion passes. 4.3, Counselors Dakota, Mercier, and Leahy, request City Council a firm vote by the Lowell Memorial Auditorium, Board of Trustees, to place a commemorative plaque in honor of the late Mickey O'Keefe. No second or third needed. Who wants to go first? Counselor Leahy, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, sorry. Counselor Dakota.
This is, this is quite an honor for me in my freshman year to bring forth this on behalf of my colleagues, Counselor Leahy and Counselor Mercier as well. I would like to first thank Peter Lowly at the Lowell Auditorium and the Lowell Memorial Auditorium Trustees, Leo Sheridan, Jim O'Donnell, Eric Faulkner, Maria Sheehy, and Mike Peaslee for making this come to fruition. Lot of us in this room knew Mickey O'Keefe, and what a great Lowellian he was. A lot of people in the public who are watching didn't know who Mickey O'Keefe was. Obviously, a lot of people know him as a police officer, trainer with boxing with the gloves, and an outstanding actor as he was in a movie. But the reason why we brought this forward is I consider Mickey to be a true humanitarian. And I say that is that a lot of people don't know how he, his wife, Donner, and his kids helped so many youth and adults in their lives. And they didn't want the fanfare. They didn't need the fanfare. They wanted to be just get it done and try to help somebody's lives, and they did that many, many, many times. My feeling is that if we had a few more Mickey O'Keefes in Lowell, this would be a great city, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Dakota said it all. Mickey O'Keefe was a legend in the city, such a reputable person, wonderful family. I couldn't have said it better than my colleague, and I'm honored to be a part of that motion. So thank you for including me because I thought the world of him and his family, so we're very proud to have made that motion. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Yes, proud to be part of this motion, and as Counselor Dakota said, I knew Mickey and his family early in the years from the Owl Diner, and there were lots of times when I was over the house doing some painting work for them, and you didn't know who was coming downstairs. He was helping so many people, and they never asked for anything. They just wanted to help. So proud to be part of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, just real quick, we're probably looking at scheduling, Mr. Manager, ceremony at the auditorium in the concourse. This plaque will be placed next to Mr. Hors in the concourse sometime in September. Okay?
Any other comments? Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Dakota.
Yes.
Counselor Getchere.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Eleven years.
Well done. Thank you very much, Counselors. Lastly, for Counselor Leahy, 4.5. Counselor Leahy requests City Manager to check into removing double polls on Andrews Street.
Second.
Second.
The entire City Council, Mr. Clerk, will see the motion.
I'll get it in. Unanimous.
Counselor Leahy, go right ahead.
I'd like to say the motion speaks for itself, but in helping out my friend Counselor Scott in her district, and hopefully she'll carry on the torch once the polls are removed, so it's only fitting that this is my last motion. It became such a big issue, and now it's on the state agenda, so I figured, you know, this would be a good final motion, so thank you.
Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, Mr. Manager, if National Grid needs a home for the poll, I can suggest we put it in front of Counselor Leahy's house, just for posterity.
Good idea.
In honor of Counselor Leahy's last motion, Mr. Clerk, we will do a roll call, if you don't mind.
I don't mind. Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Dakota.
Yes.
Counselor Getchere.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Now, also knowing that, I spoke to Mrs. Leahy last night, and she said she wanted to be out of here by 7:15 the latest, so knowing that time was going to be a little bit longer than usual, we're going to have Counselor Chow start off in saying a few words about Counselor Leahy. Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't realize it was coming this fast so soon, even though the past few weeks, we know that this day would come. I had the honor of my first term come to serve on the council. Counselor Leahy was here. There's something to be said about people that have put their lives, dedicate their lives to serving the public, and when I said they served the public, they served all level, from large organizations to individuals. What I'm trying to say, I came here as a newly elected counselor, didn't know much about the process. Counselor Leahy just took me under his wing. You were a great mentor. I don't think it was just because I voted you mayor at that time, or kidding aside, that was the easiest vote I've made since then. We became friends. You're a good guidance to me. I would say you're probably the easiest person to talk to, whether we agree on issues or not agree, but in fact, it was when we disagree on an issue or on a motion, that was when it was easiest to talk to you. You listened. You didn't jump to conclusion. You tried to understand from my point of view. That was really, really a good lesson for me, you know, in how to really represent myself and represent myself as an elected official. Needless to say, you're a great friend. You know, we're going to miss you. The Fab Five's going to miss you. I apologize I didn't get to bring you flowers today, but you really have the admiration from all of us, from me and my family especially. Congratulations to you.
Counselor Dakota?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I don't like Counselor Leahy. I've actually known John probably longer than anybody. I hung around with his brother Mark when we were kids, so running through the Leahy house, but got to know John really well when he started on the school committee when I was there. And I think, I think the biggest asset that John brought to the school committee, a steady hand, a good listener, and only spoke when he needed to speak. And that's important, especially for a politician. So, and he brought that forward to me as a mayor, and I think, John, you know I have the utmost respect for you, and I look forward to seeing you in the streets of Lowell in the future. Thank you very much for your service.
Counselor Getchere?
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. From the school committee to the city council, to a district city council, John has been a voice that can agree to disagree, and it even proved it today when he answered my phone And one of the things, you know, we talked about again, the first thing that John always talks about is always the city. You know, when I was the executive director at the water department, John Leahy would call every day. You could set your timer by it, by the projects that the city were going through, and John would say, you know, is that lip to the driveway right? It looks like it's down three inches. And then we'd say, John, it's binder. We'll get over to it, John. Don't worry about it. But even today, the, one of the concerns we talked about was the district race or the appointment of his replacement, and John said the same thing as John always says. He thought of the district, and he said, I think the best thing for the district would be a special election. So I thank John for his commitment to the city, his commitment to his district, and his commitment to the people. And John, our phones are still available, but try not the 6:30 in the morning calls. They're always early, and it's always John asking, you know, for something for somebody else. And I think that's the key thing about John Leahy, is he's always asked for somebody else for something, and I'm glad to see that John will go on into his professional career. So thank you again, John, for everything you've done for the city.
Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank Counselor Leahy for all his service to the city. For as long as I've been paying attention to politics in the City of Lowell, gentleman to my left and the woman to his left have been two consistent faces in this room, whether on the school committee or now on the council or even up there as the mayor. I really appreciate having served with you now for a term and a half and getting to sit next to you. It was really great to be able to start my time on the council next to someone who has so much time and experience and dedication to the city. Really taught me a lot about how to do this job and how to do it right. You were probably one of the first people to call me about an issue that you saw in my district after I began my service on this council, and, you know, that never stopped. You are always reaching out to all of us about things you see, things that could be improved, thoughts you have, and I hope that doesn't stop. So even as you move on from this role, I'm very thankful that you will remain in the service of the city and the people of Lowell. We're lucky to have you, and we all appreciate you. So thanks for being you, John, and thanks for putting the time in that you've put in for this city. It's, it's been a pleasure serving with you. Thank you.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes, thank you very much. So Johnny boy, I'm going to miss you. I truly, truly will, and I was honored to serve as your vice mayor when you were the mayor because you made my life easy. I hardly had any obligations because you were everywhere, consistent, on time, everywhere. You never left anything undone, and I'm very, very proud of that, and I'm going to truly miss you. I'm going to miss especially your humor because I never know what's coming out of your mouth, and it's always hilarious. We never think that someone's going to say that, but yet you find a way to do it. So thank you for your many years of service, both on the school committee and city council. I will tell you that you are a true gentleman, a wonderful family man. You love your family, and I admire you for that. You stick up for your family. You love your, your children. I'm so proud of you, and I know we don't say this often, but I will miss you. I think the world of you, and you are one of the handsomest men to serve with. So thank you for the beauty.
Second.
Second, okay. But I'll never forget, I'll never forget the day I saw you across the room at an event, and I went and I started running my fingers through, you hear. Joni, don't get upset. And I did that, and when the guy turned around, it was your brother. I thought it was you. I never was so embarrassed in my life, but thank you for everything. We're going to miss you. Thank you.
Counselor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Leahy, thank you for your year of service, starting from the school committee to city council. You have been persistent, especially in city council. Your first term as a city council, you filed motion on double poll. Last day of your council here, you filed that same motion. It's looked like the double poll's going to stay, and someone's going to have to carry that because it will always be a double poll. But John, Counselor Leahy, we're going to the city book as a true public servant. I thank you for the opportunity to serve with you all this year. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson?
Thank you. Counselor Leahy?
Counselor Leahy, from an employee working for the city, and you were already a counselor for many years, and then being elected and being able to serve with you, even if we didn't agree politically and we butted heads on different issues, at the end of the day, you are always a gentleman, you are always very respectful, and as an employee and a union rep, you are someone that would actually take the time to listen, poke around, and inform yourself on what the situation was. So greatly appreciated, and I think you set a great example for many to follow, and pay attention and realize that it truly is about listening, understanding, and getting to understand the situation you're faced. And I wish you nothing but success in your new career. Thank you, and it was an honor to serve with you.
Counselor Scott.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Leahy, and thank you for your years of service on the schools, on the city council, and thank you to your family as well, because we all know that's a huge sacrifice that our families, you know, participate in this. I think you're an absolute class act. You always keep your cool. It's something I've learned, just kind of breathe in, take things down a level, and you serve your constituents extremely well. You're always responsive. You helped out friends of mine long before I was on the council. You were the go-to person to call, showed up in your pickup truck sometimes to take care of things yourself. You got your hands dirty, you didn't mind. And I just really appreciate your friendship. I know we're going to stay in touch, we're still going to see each other, and I'm definitely going to miss your sense of humor. So, it's been wonderful serving with you.
Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Leahy, I thank you for your service of 22 years, 10 years in the school department, and 12 years on the council, and I want to thank your family for giving you time to serve our city. I did not know Counselor Leahy that well, but I know his father, who was, who was a lawyer, and I had an opportunity to bring some client for him. In 2015, when I started running for city council, I ran into Counselor Leahy at his home. He's very kind, and he, we talked, and he asked me to put a sign at his home. So that's the first introduction to meet Counselor Leahy. Very calm, and I liked that. You know, he, he put everything in perspective, and how to deal with issue, even though it's a really burning issue, but he was able to really put it in a way that, that really, even he disagreed with you, but he make it sounds really good enough. The one thing that I, I, I remember clearly when I was first elected, and we were asked to sit at the council meeting kind of orientation, so Counselor Wayne Janess and I sitting right here, and he was somewhere up there, and then we were, Counselor Janess and I would do selfie, and he called us out, he said, "Oh, those two, just like the high school kids in the back," and so, and that's, we remember that. So Counselor Janess and I would laugh at it. So if I may make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to add on to Counselor Leahy's name, John Double Pole Leahy, add on to his portrait at the city hall, that would be really tremendous. Thank you, John, we will miss you.
Mr. Clerk.
Counselor, Johnny, I've known you well before we entered this building. I own you a long time, and I can honestly, honestly say, even up to today, you make my head spin. But Johnny is who he is because he's from good stock. He's got a great family, they've been in Lowell a long time, and they're always being in Lowell, and that's, that's who John Leahy's about, and that's who John Leahy's always going to be about. A lot of people don't remember, but John was the, was the mayor during the height of COVID. And I don't believe we missed one meeting during that time because of his dedication and his, and his work ethic, and we ran those meetings out of my office that whole time, and it should have been a crappy time, but you made it a lot of fun. So, good luck to you, and you know where I live, and I know where you live.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. On behalf of the administration, John, I want to say thank you very much for always being a dedicated Lowellian, a true professional, somebody that was never afraid to literally get their hands dirty. More than once, I had to stop a union grievance, because you would jump out of your truck and paint something, pick something up, and start fixing something. I can't tell you the number of times we would talk on Sundays, or even on Saturday, can we get this accomplished? And before I could say yes, you would say, "Well, the heck with it, I'll take care of it myself." And you did. So when Counselor Scott talked about somebody who had a hand-on, hands-on experience, that is you. But your entire family name is synonymous with giving. We've always given to this community, and the Leahy name is first-class. As my dad would say, if you want to give a man a compliment, call him a gentleman. You, Counselor Leahy, are a true gentleman. Thank you for everything you've done for this city.
And finally, John, you know, it's been, it's been a pleasure to get to know you over the past 10, 15 years. Actually, you know, interning at Lowell District Court 25, 30 years ago, I got to know Attorney Leahy a little bit, and then getting to know you afterwards. There's a lot of similarities between you and your dad. No BS, whatever you thought, that's what you said, you're stuck by it, but always in a kind, gentle, respectful manner. I see the way that you talk about your dad, and the thing that I did see was a lot of your father, you and your father, your father and you. So, you know, it's just been a great decade to serve with you, and to be able to have a drink once in a while, to get to know you and your family, and vice versa. Called you many occasions, not just in the political world, but just in personal life as well, and just very honored to be able to serve with you, but much more honored to be able to call you my friend. So with that being said, Counselor, the floor is yours.
It is not time to say. I'm not going to, we have a full agenda tonight, so I'll be brief, but first, I want to thank my wife, Joni, and my family, my kids. So one time at a fundraiser, I forgot to thank my wife, and I've never forgotten ever since. So always thank your wife and your family, your spouse, and my brothers, my sisters, the kids, everybody. My friend Jim Comart, who's been doing the books, it's a lot to ask of him, but he did it, and he was there every year. My time on school committee and the councils that I've served with, I thank you all. Everybody has something to offer, to special, and a lot of good friends over the years, and continue with this council today. And Mr. Manager and your team, everybody's been wonderful. I'm glad I was the deciding vote to get you in here, but seriously, you're doing a great job. All the work that's been done this year, I can't say enough. And I think your whole team is just spectacular, and we're really gelling together, and I hope the work continues to serve the city of Lowell. And again, I'm gonna, I'm still here, I'm going to be working with the school department, and I like to get involved, I like to get my hands dirty, so it's a perfect ending for me. And 10 years on school committee, my first mayor right here, and 12 years on the council, and it's, it's been an honor and a privilege every day with everybody in every department, all the department heads and the past managers, so, and past mayor. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it, and I bid you adieu. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, could we have a picture?
Yeah.
May we have a picture?
The Leahy family coming up for a quick photo? All right, back to the agenda. We have 2.2's communication. We're going to take 4.6. Before that, by Counselor Janess, seconded by Counselor Getchea, take 4.6 out of order. If you say aye, opposed, worship passes. 4.6, Counselor Janess requests pursuant to Council Rule 11, reconsideration of Counselor Mercier's motion on the process for filling the expected vacancy of the District 3 seat in Lowell City Council. Reconsidered motion, motion by Counselor Mercier, seconded by Counselor Dakota, to fill the vacancy of the city council by way of appointment by body, in which candidates may submit their names to the city clerk if they have lived in their district for one year, and that from the list of names provided to the council will select the vacancy as anticipated by the resignation of existing counselor. Adopted per roll call, seven yes, seven yeas, three nays, one present, so voted. Second, seconded by Counselor Noon. Mr. Clerk.
Yeah, we have registered speakers, Sue Kim.
Hello. Sue Kim, 52 Lawrence Drive, Lowell, Massachusetts. So I'm actually speaking in support of motions 4.6 as well as 4.12. I didn't read the agenda carefully enough before I emailed you. So first, I was a plaintiff in the voting rights lawsuit, but I just want to clear that I'm speaking only for myself today, not on behalf of the plaintiffs. So first, I didn't realize he was going to leave. I was going to say, "Thank you, John Leahy, for being a great city counselor and mayor." Second, I wanted to clarify on this issue, that this matter was first discussed with our attorney on Thursday, July 11th, the same day a Lowell Sun article was published that said the matter was being reviewed by the plaintiffs. While I appreciate the city's reaching out to the plaintiffs for our input, I would like to note that that Lowell Sun article was the first I had heard of this matter. We immediately conferred and responded on July 17th to the city. That is six days for a group of people, the plaintiffs, who had not seen or talked to each other much in three years. I would just like to make a note of this timing. Second, and again, this is in my personal view, the special election in Belvedere honors the spirit of the lawsuit in having the district members elect a replacement, particularly within the first year. That is, if a city counselor or school committee member steps down, and there were no other candidates in the election, no quote-unquote "losing candidate," a special election is in keeping with the spirit of our lawsuit for better local representation throughout the city. As has been noted by others, imagine if this issue was coming up in one of the majority-minority districts mandated by the consent decree. It would go against the spirit and purpose of the consent decree to have the city council appoint a replacement. There is no reason, structurally speaking, why the Belvedere District should not have the same level of local representation in choosing a replacement. For these reasons, I urge the council to support both motions 4.6 and 4.11, I think it's 11 or 12, one of those, you know what I mean. Thank you very much.
Jeff Thomas.
Good evening. Jeff Thomas, 76 Bowden Street, Lowell, Mass. I vote in favor of the reconsideration vote. There's been a lot of reconsideration going on, especially in the last few days. We just had the leader of the free world, President of the United States reconsider his decision on whether he's running or not. We have another person in place now, and that's how that goes. That's not how this goes. We need to have a special election with this. There shouldn't be an appointment, and that's just how I feel. What happens if John Leahy decides to reconsider right now and comes back? Then we're not here now, so that's another reconsideration. Though that's not happening, it would be pretty funny. So I'm in favor of the reconsideration vote, and also 4.12. Thank you.
Lynn Daly.
Good evening. Lynn Daly, 35 Windward Road, Lowell, Mass. The home rule petition process started with a formal request from the mayor and the city council by drafting a petition in response to oppressing local city issue, namely, a pending vacancy of a city council seat in District 3. The home rule petition is a tool that provides a city or town with the flexibility to solve local issues, where existing laws might fall short. It is an advocacy pathway and collaborative process to find solutions. Members of the city council and the mayor requested that the legislature put forward a home rule petition relative to vacancies on the City of Lowell City Council and School Committee. The home rule petition is entitled "An Act Relative to Vacancies on the City of Lowell City Council and School Committee." Passage of this legislation put forward by State Senator Ed Kennedy and State Reps Vanna Howard, Rodney Elliot, and Ratty Mom is imminent. Thank you to the Lowell delegation. The city requested legislative action, namely, the home rule petition, because the city knew this was the tool that we needed to provide due diligence for all of the residents in the City of Lowell now and in the future. If this objective has changed, the city will vote to make a political appointment to fill the vacant city council seat in District 3. If this objective has not changed, then the home rule petition will prevail. The home rule petition would allow for a special election to fill the vacant city council seat in District 3. The council should reconsider and vote no on the disingenuous motion by City Counselor Mercier, seconded by Counselor Dakota, to fill the vacancy of District 3 city council seat by way of a political appointment. Democracy is government by the people. Democracy is not government by a political appointment. Thank you.
Matthew Gendron.
Good evening. I'm Matt Gendron, 130 John Street, Lowell, Mass.
Why are we rushing this process? I wholeheartedly believe having the residents of District 3 vote for a city council that will represent them. The current city council should not dictate who should. All the city councillors were elected by the people. This is why we should have a special election. District 3 residents should have the right to vote for their representative. Isn't this the reason why we voted for district representation? It is simple, really, really simple. Tonight, the 10 remaining city councillors can vote to give our neighbors in District 3 a voice in their district councillor, or you can vote to prevent that voice from being heard. It is clear the choice is entirely yours. Thank you very much.
Patrick Donovan.
Good evening, councillors. First, I'd like to thank Councilman Leahy for his years of service. Yeah, I'll keep it short and sweet. You know, as you can see tonight, there are a lot of folks here from District 3 in favor of you all supporting a special election.
Just the address for the record, please.
What's that?
Address for the record.
Name and address.
Oh, sorry.
49 Frodenham Street.
Thank you.
But I would also urge you all to support that special election. The folks in District 3 will turn out and vote for who we think should represent us. Thank you, Councilor Janess, for bringing this motion, and thank you, thank you, council, very much.
Councilor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd just like to thank everyone who came down tonight, whether they came down to speak or came down just to support this process. I appreciate the engagement. I also appreciate the nine folks who've put their name forward to be willing to serve on this body. I appreciate that all nine of you stepped up for the neighborhood. I think that's very important, and it's very exciting to see. But I do think that appointing anyone tonight would be shortcutting this process and would be depriving the residents of District 3 from the ability to select their own representative, which is really the basis of our entire system of government. I think that we should take a beat and wait to see what's going to happen with the home rule petition. Since we last sat here two weeks ago, it has moved at a pace I've never seen something move through the state legislature. And I'd like to thank the delegation for their work to get us to this point. Senator Kennedy, all three reps, Howard, Mom, and Elliott have been involved in this process and have been pushing this forward, trying to get this across the finish line. As someone mentioned, this is a precedent-setting thing. We haven't had this situation occur under this new system of government. However, we do have this home rule legislation pending, and I think us appointing someone just before this law were to pass and take effect would really not send a good message to the city. I also think that if we were to appoint someone tonight, that person would then be an incumbent at the next election and would enjoy a serious advantage just by the nature of the incumbency. One of the speakers tonight mentioned they live in District 4 and don't have a vote. I live in District 4, too. I don't think I should have a vote. I think this should be up to the residents of District 3. I think this is an important step we can take, and I think we're close on getting the home rule petition across the finish line. If that stalls and we aren't, and it looks like that's not going to happen, we still have 30 days from tonight to make an appointment. So to make an appointment tonight is really, it's jumping the gun in my mind. So I would like to encourage my colleagues to reconsider our vote from two weeks ago and to give this process some more time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First and foremost, I have to thank my colleague for filing a reconsideration. In the role we're all in, I mean, information comes at you at blinding speed. Sometimes you make a decision on the fly that you really didn't have enough time to vet, and I thank my colleague for filing a reconsideration. Something like this, I can speak for myself. I'm a prime example. At one time, our city didn't have district representation. A candidate like myself wouldn't have stood a chance. It took a group of people seeing that and working to provide an opportunity to change something that they felt was wrong, and by doing so, giving the people a voice. As you heard many of the speakers tonight, it's our civic duty as elected officials, with every resource we have at our disposal, to exhaust every possible avenue and provide the residents of District 3 that same opportunity. Let their voices be heard. I think, as we all saw tonight, Councilor Leahy served quite some time in that role and was loved by his community in entirety. I also believe with Councilor Leahy pursuing other ambitions now, the appetite for representation in that district is very apparent with nine names popping up in less than four days. That speaks to the interests, that speaks to what we all speak about that we're after, engagement, that speaks to our residents more than willing to step up and fill the blank when need be, and I think we need to really exhaust every single option at our disposal. I mean, we have great allies in the state level. We have people in the House tonight that work turning the tools behind the scenes for some of these state people, and you know what? They've been working tirelessly as well. So I think as a whole, we hear loud and clear, the community wants to be able to give our residents a voice to choose who's going to represent them, and I hope my colleagues will support that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilor Getche?
Mayor Rourke, do we have anybody from the delegation here who can tell us where exactly this is currently, the home rule petition? Is there anybody in the audience that can come up and give us an update?
Yes.
Do we have them come up and give us an update?
You can ask them, yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. City manager, members of the city council. My name is Rodney Elliott. I live at 15 Crested Drive. So I can tell you the status of this is last Thursday, both the Senate and the House were in session, and Senator Kennedy and his office was able to pass the original home rule petition with an amendment that was recommended by Senate Council. Thursday evening at 5:00, that came over to the House, and later that evening, it was read for the first time by the House Clerk, referred to the Committee on Policy Steering and Scheduling, which is the requirement. The following day, that was released with a favorable report by Chair Honan, and read a second time and referred to the bills in third reading. That's the process. Bills have to be read three times. Friday afternoon, I spoke with the chair, and the delegation has been working together. I spoke with Chair Walsh in order to put this before the House. It has to be presented to the House Clerk for the orders of the day. Later that evening, we received a, I think everybody received, an email from the city solicitor around 6:00, outlining some concerns relative to the requirement for a preliminary election for a special election. So with that, as well, along with the second, I believe he was in conference with the Secretary of State's office. Right. So with that, language, House Counsel was contacted, and language has been drafted that was forwarded to every member of the city council, the city manager, the mayor, yesterday. So in order to satisfy that requirement, this body, there were two avenues. I spoke with House Counsel yesterday. The city manager, I spoke to the city manager, similar to the First Amendment, minor changes, he can authorize this change to not require a preliminary election for a special election. Or the city council can vote to include this new language, which has been forwarded to you. If the council so chooses to vote for that language and remove the preliminary, which is, again, is a recommendation from the administration and the city solicitor, if the clerk, as soon as the clerk can prepare a letter, I will, I can pick it up tomorrow. We can bring it down to the chair of bills in third reading. They are aware of what is taking place. We keep in touch with them, and we'll move that legislation forward. So that is the status. There is language that has been approved by Secretary of State, Solicitor, and House Counsel. That should you adopt this evening. As the clerk can prepare a communication to the House of Representatives, we'll proceed and get that done. So we got it Thursday. We moved it Friday. There were some concerns. You get that to us, and I believe we'll be able to get it on the orders of the day. We're in, this doesn't require formal session, but we're in Thursday, Wednesday and Thursday, full formal. So I hope that's helpful.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, through you to the city solicitor. Mr. Solicitor, is, I know a couple of weeks ago, you said any minor changes to the home rule petition, the manager just could okay and go down there. Is the preliminary election piece on its way down there, or is it, because it's recommended by the state, is it a minor change, not a minor change? So where is that right now? Is it down at the State House or not? Or where are we in that process? That the state rep just highlighted, he had said that the change that's needed, that got sent back to us, is that down at the State House currently because the manager made that change, or is that something that we haven't done yet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No. So with that change, with removing the requirement for a preliminary election, while it doesn't require an amendment to the charter, it does, the legislation will allow to take a section of the charter and not apply it to special elections. So I am of the opinion that that would not fall within the scope of a minor change. That's why my opinion is that the city council tonight would be the vehicle to give the city manager the authority to, as Mr. Elliott just spoke of, the city clerk, if given the authority, to the city manager would prepare a letter, and that would get sent down to the delegation, and that would allow them to move it forward through their process.
In your opinion, can that be added to the agenda tonight to do that, to give the manager the authority? And if so, where in the agenda can you do that? He just said he could.
Yes. So I specifically made a note when I looked at the agenda at 4.12. I think that would be an opportunity to introduce this and give the council the opportunity to vote, to give the city manager the authority, to approve that language and move it forward.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, in my belief, you know, democracy is right behind us and it's up there, and I just think anything we can do to move this forward would represent the residents in the districts. And just because we all had supported this home rule petition when it all came our way in the beginning, we all said yes. We all wanted this. We all wanted it done. We all voted on it, but now this changes to it, so it got sent down there. And the point is just, what's that?
Two noes.
Two noes. Okay, I'm sorry. Was it nine to two?
Yeah, nine to two.
All right. So who were the two?
You and Councilor Robinson.
All right, so now we flipped, so now we got 11. So now we got 11. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. But at the end of the day, we're trying to get this process done, and how do we get this process done to get it to the voters? And I think that the process is pretty outlined when you look at it. We want people to vote. I think all of us have that. When all of us come here every weekend and week out, and we look for something in our district that isn't right, we look to all the others to help and support the function of our districts. We all do that, whether it's a builder coming in and building on a property, or if it's something else, we need each other to make this system work. We all know that, and this is the best for the district that can be done, is try to get it down there and try to get this through. And I thank the solicitor for his hard work on this. I'm sure it's not been a fun time being a city solicitor. The manager, I thank you for everything that you're trying to do to try to get this done because I do think it's important in democracy to have that done. And I'm sure I've been on the phone and in touch with the city solicitor and the manager multiple times on this, trying to figure out, because this is not our wheelhouse, it's down at the State House. You know, at the beginning, we're told nothing can get through, and then next thing we know, where it's in the third reading of, you know, the House of Representatives, is the manager is shaking his head, saying, "Yeah, it's fast." And I think that we need to do this for the people, so I would recommend that we support the reconsideration of this and do what we're all asking for and try to get it down there because we all support it. As the clerk can prepare a communication to the House of Representatives, we'll proceed and get that done. So we got it Thursday, we moved it Friday. There were some concerns. You get that to us, and I believe we'll be able to get it on the orders of the day. This doesn't require formal session, but we're in Thursday, Wednesday and Thursday, full formal. So I hope that's helpful.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, through you to the city solicitor. Mr. Solicitor, is, I know a couple of weeks ago, you said any minor changes to the home rule petition, the manager just could okay and go down there. Is the preliminary election piece on its way down there, or is it, because it's recommended by the state, is it a minor change, not a minor change? So where is that right now? Is it down at the State House or not? Or where are we in that process? That the state rep just highlighted, he had said that the change that's needed, that got sent back to us, is that down at the State House currently? Because the manager made that change, or is that something that we haven't done yet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No. So with that change, with removing the requirement for a preliminary election, while it doesn't require an amendment to the Charter, it does, the legislation will allow to take a section of the Charter and not apply it to special elections. So I am of the opinion that that would not fall within the scope of a minor change. That's why my opinion is that the City Council tonight would be the vehicle to give the City Manager the authority to, as Mr. Elliott just spoke of, the city clerk, if given the authority to the City Manager, would prepare a letter, and that would get sent down to the delegation, and that would allow them to move it forward through their process.
In your opinion, can that be added to the agenda tonight to do that? To give the manager the authority? And if so, where in the agenda can you do that? He just said he could.
Yes. So I specifically made a note when I looked at the agenda at 4:12. I think that would be an opportunity to introduce this and give the Council the opportunity to vote, to give the City Manager the authority to approve that language and move it forward.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, in my belief, you know, democracy is right behind us and it's up there. And I just think anything we can do to move this forward would represent the residents in the districts. Just because we all had supported this home rule petition when it all came our way in the beginning, we all said yes. We all wanted this. We all wanted it done. We all voted on it, but now this changes to it, so it got sent down there. And the point is just, what's that?
Two noes.
Two noes. Okay, I'm sorry. Was it nine to two?
Yeah, nine to two.
All right. So who were the two?
You and Council Robinson.
All right. So now we flipped. So now we got 11. So now we got 11. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. But at the end of the day, we're trying to get this process done. And how do we get this process done to get it to the voters? And I think that the process is pretty outlined when you look at it. We want people to vote. I think all of us have that. When all of us come here every weekend and week out, and we look for something in our district that isn't right, we look to all the others to help and support the function of our districts. We all do that. Whether it's a builder coming in and building on a property, or if it's something else, we need each other to make this system work. We all know that. And this is the best for the district that can be done, is try to get it down there and try to get this through. And I thank the Solicitor for his hard work on this. I'm sure it's not been a fun time being a city solicitor. The manager, I thank you for everything that you're trying to do to try to get this done, because I do think it's important in democracy to have that done. And I'm sure I've been on the phone and in touch with the city solicitor and the manager multiple times on this, trying to figure out, because this is not our wheelhouse, it's down at the State House. You know, at the beginning, we're told nothing can get through, and then next thing we know, where it's in the third reading of, you know, the House of Representatives, is the manager is shaking his head saying, yeah, it's fast. And I think that we need to do this for the people. So I would recommend that we support the reconsideration of this and do what we're all asking for and try to get it down there, because we all support it.
Council Noon.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you know, we're back at this again. You know, we did ask for this home rule petition. We are close to get that approved, thanks to Senator Kennedy and the delegation, Rap Elliott, Rap Howard, and Rap Mom, for help pushing through. I often believe that if we were to make those minor changes, that we'll get it done very soon, and we send it to, you know, special election. I urge my colleagues to support that special election. Open election, allow the Belvedere people the opportunity to select their own representative. As Sue Kim stated, that this will honor the spirit of the lawsuit, you know, the district representation. We have 17 months in Council Leahy term. So let's do it. Let's give the Belvedere people this special election to choose their representative. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Council Decoro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering if we could have Mr. Papas, Director of Elections, up to the lecturing, please.
Is he here, Mr. Manager? Oh. Mr. Papas?
So I was just talking to Senator Kennedy's staff.
Hey, Tommy, how are you? Good, good.
Good evening.
Greg Papas, Elections.
How are you, Mr. Papas?
What was the question, Council?
How are you?
Good. How are you, Council?
Good. So in the past week, I've gotten many phone calls, special elections, no, yes, and I'm worried about timelines.
Yeah, I am too.
I am worried because you're leaving.
Right.
Next month.
I'm retiring August 2nd, yes. I didn't want to, but it's some health issues, but I'll be fine, but.
We have a presidential primary, and we have a.
Election.
An election.
Right.
Can you tell me in your professional opinion, can we pull this off before December?
Before, well, like you said, I'm retiring. We do have a new director coming in, and we are fortunate that this election was made. You'll, I'm sure the manager will announce it. It'll be, it's going to be a good person that knows this job. But the reality is, is if you, we have, let's put it this way, the presidential primary election back in 2020 was 38,000 people voted. Say 40,000. So out of the 40,000, 20% did mail-in ballots. Mail-in ballots take seven steps to do, whereas voting at the polls take only one step. So you have five people doing seven steps on 20% of the ballots. At the polls, you have 300 people doing one step. This is probably going to be the biggest presidential election since Abraham Lincoln. I don't know. Could be have, I don't think we're going to have 40,000, we could have 50,000, 60,000 in law. And now the mail-ins are averaging about 70%, which means, figure what 70% of 60,000 or 50,000 ballots are, with five people trying to do that, or five machines tied into the state. And what's going to happen is, unless you have people around the clock, we barely made the last election in time with the mail-in ballots. If we have that many mail-in ballots, I don't see how, like several other communities, how we're going to get those mail-in ballots processed through the VRIS, unless we're doing it 24/7. We already worked three weeks straight, but if you're not going around the clock, you're not going to process them through to get them back to people, back to be voted in time. So I don't know how we're going to be able to do a city at the same time. We won't even have time to do the, if there's no preliminary, I'm assuming, having grown up here, I know there's a lot of candidates who'll probably run, particularly Belvedere, five, 10, 15, I don't know how we would even have the time to borrow, use one machine just to do the certification, the nominations. It's just, we're already doing stuff today, we haven't even done the primary in September, we're doing stuff, putting people who are running for president, doing their certifications for the at-large, people running as, so they don't mix in with the state election stuff. And then let them borrow the machines when we're not using them, because the presidential is absolutely, positively going to be crazy, you know? And I have to keep everything separate, because you can't let things mix, stickers, or the seven steps get mixed. It's going to be crucial, it's going to, one mistake, and we're not going to catch it till after the election, and it happens at the polling places. It's going to be really difficult to do.
So this is my worry, then, is that we can't guarantee an election result.
No.
By December, where, and Council Scott and Council Chow, please correct me if I'm wrong, but when we had a rural subcommittee, it was the intent that we were going to bring it to the full council, that if we did not, if the candidate was after one year, then the council would vote that person in. If it was before, it was within the year, then it would go to a special election. Now we're asking the Director of Elections, can he give us a date on when this will be finalized? And he can't. So that's my dilemma right now. So am I saying anything incorrect?
Well, no, you're not, I just want to say, Council, that without a preliminary, it's a minimum four months. With a preliminary, it's five. You can't stretch, you can't, like when we do the city election, your papers come out, it starts in June, and the preliminary is September, and the election is November.
The whole thing.
You can't shrink, you can get bigger, but you can't shrink, the statutes don't allow it here.
So five months from now?
You're going to need four months without a preliminary. From the time the papers are available.
September, October, November, December.
And that's, let's see, what's this, this is August?
Well, August is next.
So it'll be, I say, August, September, October, November, it'd be running concurrent with the presidential, and it'd be a freaking nightmare, I'll be honest with you. I don't know any clerk or city, they usually do this, the cities will do specials in the spring, the towns will do them in the fall, so they don't, I mean, in the spring also, so they don't, or the summer, so they don't coincide with the same elections.
Right.
It's just so intricate, the seven steps that are required for each ballot with, like I said, five people. Even if we get help, we can get help with people to, you know, seal ballots, run them through the machines. We also have to deliver the ballots to the polls office. We have to send Belvedere to a record, we have to drive them out there. If we don't, we mail them in law, they're going to Boston. Same thing with Centerville, I have to take them to Drake, and we have to every night send somebody else to take them, hundreds and thousands and thousands of ballots. And here's the other thing, the United States Post Office just sent us another thing, saying that, oh, the 10 days, usually it takes us to get the ballots back to when people mail them, might be 20 now, because they're shorthanded in Boston, and they put a notice out to businesses and the Secretary's Office, everybody. It's really, the mailing process, like I said, is getting tougher and tougher and tougher. I just got a ballot in yesterday for the presidential primary, and we had in what? In February.
February.
I mean, March. And I got a presidential election ballot in from 2020, a week ago, four years late. I had over 400 ballots that were late, just for the City Council race alone, that didn't get counted. People are going to say, I voted, but you didn't get counted, they came back late. The state election, it was like almost, you know, 11, 1200. This one's going to probably be 3, 4,000. That, I mean, people, and then people are not filling out the mail-in things right. I keep telling them, you have to pick a ballot. I have about 1,000 to 1,500 today came in that people did not pick primary ballots. Now they're only going to get a ballot in November, they're not going to get a primary ballot, they're going to be calling up, saying, we don't have phone numbers to tell them. It's really quite the process. We've got so much to handle with this, and I think the new director knows, because where he's coming from, that we're probably going to need five weeks straight, Saturday, Sunday, Saturday, like we did three weeks during the presidential, five weeks straight, and that may not be enough. Hopefully, we'll get the ballots done for the presidential in time, or we're going to have a problem, to process them in, to get them into the mail and get them back to us.
I appreciate your honest opinion, I'm going to let my.
But four months.
I'm going to let my colleagues speak, have any questions for you, but I'm, I'll be quite honest with the crowd, I'm wavering at this point, because if we don't have anything by January 1st, I say we pick somebody tonight. But, and we don't have, we don't have an answer. Nobody can tell me that we're going to have this all set and ready to go, when we have the presidential election and everything else going, and if you have one or two mistakes downstairs, forget it.
It's, the mistakes, you've got to be careful, because they're not just little ones, they'll reflect right across the whole election. It could make the election, it could taint both elections. And then you've got a problem with Boston, the legislature in confirmation for, you know.
Mr. Papas.
That's what I'm saying, doing it at the time period we're talking at, it's, it's impossible.
I get, I get.
Unless we set up two different operations, which is going to be tough to do, I don't see how we can do that.
All right. I appreciate your honest opinion.
Just being honest, yeah, I'm telling you. Any others, Council, before we go back to Councils that already spoke? Anybody else? Council get you.
This is insane to me. I've been in government for 35 years. When there's a water main break, we go fix it. When there's extra work, we figure out a way. This is insane to even think that we're bringing up this kind of stuff, when that's their job. We gave that department more resources than any other department, we hired more people down there. Right now, tonight, on 8/3, we're here asking for a new director to come in, and the previous director made $92,360, but this one ranges from 110,000 to 129,000. But we can't do it. We're already saying we can't do it, we haven't even tried to do it. We're not even in the process of doing it. I think it's insane that we sit here and try to say, we can't do something, so let's vote against it. How about we start saying we can do things around here? And get them done? It's just amazing to me that in 35 years of government, I've seen one department, it works from what? What time of the hour is down there? 8 to 4:30, 5 o'clock? And now we all of a sudden, we're telling people, we can't do it, you know, we can't do this, we can't, we'll give you the resources, we have no problem during every other election, hiring more and more workers and getting everything done. This is a small district. We can absolutely do this, and this is just some, another speed bump in the road to say, listen, you know, here's my excuse to the public, please understand, you know, it's, there's a lot of work. We know there's a lot of work. We know all your jobs are valuable. We understand all that. We understand the police officers who don't sleep all night, or the guy who has to go out and plow the roads every day, those are long nights. They don't think about that, they go and do it. So that's what we're asking the Elections Department and the City Manager, is you're going to have long nights. We agree. We 100% agree. We have a new person, and I spoke to you, and you told me he is the best in the state, there is no question, this guy is the best. You call him for stuff. So I don't get it. Let's go with the best, and we got people here, and let's hire whoever we need to hire and get it done.
Mr. Papas? The bottom line is, the bottom line is, you have five machines that are licensed only to people in elections. Only trained people can use them. I can't borrow Tommy here to sit down, you can't be trained on it, it takes years to learn how to use them. That's why we got the best coming in. Those five machines can only be done, worked with by a handful of people. You've got only so many hours to process them, and the amount of ballots, I mean, if we get 70% of 50,000 ballots, we're not going to finish those, never mind start the city elections.
Are there contractors the city can hire to help?
It's got nothing to do with help, it's got to do with the five machines.
So can we get more machines?
No, you can't. The secretary licenses the five, that's it. That's all you get. No other cities and towns.
So then we work through tonight, and it takes time for the.
We can work through tonight, but even on a 24-hour schedule, if you sit down and figure it out, we probably won't get them done if we didn't.
They're different times, I don't think they could be done at the same time.
Trust me on this, Council.
I just think this is, you know, putting the.
You can't make a mistake in federal election, you'll end up.
Move the question. It has nothing to do with the federal election.
This is a presidential election.
Move the question.
Believe me, you know, it's fine. It's a presidential election, it's a federal election, you know? So you don't want the US Attorney coming in here like they did in Holland, made them do the whole thing over again and pay for it. Holland had to pay for the whole thing, so.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to comment. This home rule petition that was crafted, that was voted no by two of our members, again, the portion I didn't support was appointment. I think appointment makes no sense, and I know it's in our charter. Second point is, it gives the Council options in the second year, if we can be clear on what was drafted by this Council. In the second year, they have three options, special election, appointment, or leave vacant based on how close it is to the next cycle. So even if we had to push this out to January to satisfy the 70% of mail-in ballots, and every excuse in the book why we can't do something in November, and we can't do something possibly in December, we can still hold an election in January for the seat if need be. At the end of the day, the core of all this is, how do we get to yes to provide the residents an ability, an opportunity to cast a ballot for who they want to represent their district? As far as the logistics of who's going to do it and win, let's set a realistic timeframe that's going to work for those that are going to have to do late nights to count the ballots. But that should not even be a reason to hinge your vote or not support providing your residents the opportunity to cast a ballot. I mean, we're talking about, the city can't manage to schedule something to allow our employees that we pay to perform a service, to do that service, that's going to make the most sense. If it's going to clash with the presidential election, then we schedule to do it after. We schedule to do it a month after, weeks after, whatever is most practical. But to sit here and say, that is what's going to hinder whether or not you support the residents casting a ballot, again, I mean, I just hope if you can't support pushing and doing everything for a special election, don't start your next sentence with, I think a special election would be the best, but, be honest, you don't want a special election. We have the opportunity to carry it into the next year, based on the home rule petition that was drafted, and now you want to bend what you participated and drafted. Thank you.
Council Janus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was one thing I neglected to mention in my opening comments that I wanted to make sure I said, which was just, we need to take into consideration that everyone who came to speak tonight was in favor of a special election. And I want to say, every email we got was in favor of a special election. I think there might have been one email advocating for one specific candidate, but nobody said, do an appointment because it needs to happen quickly. That tells me it's pretty overwhelming what the people want. And it's also what we as a Council wanted when we voted to approve that special act, or to approve the home rule petition. I understand the constraints and concerns raised by Mr. Papas, I do. However, none of those constraints would prevent us from doing a special election had this home rule petition already been passed by the legislature and signed by the governor. Then it would be the law, and we would have to have done it. So for us to run an end around because it's hard, doesn't sit well with me. The people are telling us what they want, the Council has said, yes, this is what we want. I think it's what we need to do. And we need to be able to give the resources to the Elections Department for them to be able to accomplish this goal. The timing is going to be the same, no matter what, once this special act is passed and adopted. If there's a resignation, there will always be a state election, at the least, if not a presidential election, in the middle of the Council term. That's just how the calendar works. So if we're going to use that as a reason not to do it, then why did we pass the special, why are we trying to get the special act passed at all? Those are my thoughts, and I'm hopeful that my colleagues will agree with me to support this motion to reconsider.
Council Noon, quickly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I say, yes, we can, if we try. If we try, doesn't have to be at the presidential election, if it's trouble enough for the Election Department, we can do it after the presidential election, that if we try. It's not for ourselves, for the resident, whether it be Belvedere's or anywhere in this district. And in this case, for District Three. If we're not doing that, then I don't know. We're not doing our job. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we have a resident here that failed to register. Would it be possible to suspend the rules to allow them to speak, please?
Sure.
Make a motion to suspend the rules to allow a resident to speak. Thank you.
Good evening. I did register, I think I just got skipped over. Thank you, Mayor Rourke. Thank you, Council members. Thank you, City Manager Golden. I'm Erin Gendron, I'm from Wetherby Ave. I want, I'm a candidate, and I'm appointed, I'm a candidate for appointment for the third District City Council vacancy, and wanted to speak on this motion. The change to District Council was meant to give the citizens better representation throughout the city. The vote to appoint, rather than to wait for the home rule petition, appears to be legally within your rights, but just. appears to be legally within your rights, but just because you can doesn't mean you should. Belvedere will not be left without a voice during the time that this seat remains open. We have three Outlodge counselors, and those are my counselors. They represent District 3 as well. I'm asking council to please follow the democratic process and allow the position to go to a vote. I urge the council to reconsider and give District 3 the right to vote for their neighborhood representation. I also wanted to speak, I'm a social worker, and I wanted to speak on transparency because there's something that really bothered me about this appointment. I'm an appointed official, too. I'm on the Board of Health, so I'm appointed already. Every appointment that comes before this council, the letter says, "Send your resume and other pertinent information." I looked at the open meeting law, and this appointment says, "Send pertinent information in a letter of intent." Those two are exclusionary. They're the only exception to what has to become public record. So there are nine people who put their name in the ring that no one from the district knows what their qualifications are. And I believe there are very qualified candidates. So if this doesn't go to a vote, I think we need to address this because it doesn't show transparency in government. And I think that that's really important because if you guys are gonna make the decision for us, we should know who are the options. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, roll call.
On the motion to reconsider, Counselor Mercier.
Excuse me for clarification, Mr. Clerk. A yes vote does what, and a no vote does what?
You're asking me?
The motion is to reconsider. So if you want to reconsider it, you vote yes. If you don't want to reconsider it, you vote no.
That's correct, yeah. It's on the motion to reconsider. Counselor Mercier.
No.
Counselor Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
No.
Counsel Scott.
No.
Counsel Yem.
No.
Counsel Chow.
No.
Counsel Dakota.
No.
Counsel Getchier.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Only four years. Motion fails.
So heading back to 2.2.
Mr. Mayor, through you to the solicitor. Whereas that motion was challenged, how does that impact that motion?
The motion stands. The motion to reconsider failed, so the motion from two weeks ago stands.
The motion from two weeks ago stands even with a challenge?
Challenge failed, Counsel.
Open meeting law?
The motion for reconsideration that was on, is that what you're referring to? That was just...
The initial motion that my colleague filed to reconsider, which I was under the understanding that he was filing to reconsider his vote on that motion. But the motion as a whole, where it's challenged, how do we address that?
I'm really confused with what you're asking me.
We have open meeting law violation filed as a result of that motion.
Right. But an open meeting law complaint isn't a challenge. That's not a separate vehicle from anything else that happens here. That's just a certain set of facts and applying the open meeting law to what happened at that meeting. So that isn't some... It's not like a specific challenge to that motion that would preclude anything to happen one way or the other. If that's what you're saying, you don't have to stop acting on it because there's an open meeting law complaint.
Okay. That was...
All right.
Thank you.
So we've got 2.2, it's Communication Submission Selection District 3 City Council Vacancy. We have nine names that have been submitted. If anybody that's here this evening that put their name in for their position, let it come up and say a couple of words, advocate, that's fine. So Reverend Karina Fontanaz. Cory Belanger. Mr. Mayor. Counsel is... Mr. Manager on the Administration, good evening. Cory Belanger, 200 Rogers Street. I do want to thank the council for their vote two weeks ago on an open forum and accepting applicants for those who are interested. From what I understand, there are many, many qualified candidates. Many young, talented candidates at that. Want to answer that they're very talented and in the future bodes very well for the city. However, tonight is about the right now and what is best for the city under these circumstances. Now, of course, a special election. I understand all points of view, all the speakers who spoke tonight. The council is in favor of a special election. And maybe those councilors who may vote to appoint, they want a special election ideally as well, I'm sure. As would I, had I been sitting in that seat tonight. However, we are facing quite a dilemma here with the home rule petition. We all just heard the Election Commission Director speak of the difficulties facing that his department on top of a presidential election with the addition of a local election, and what could happen, and the ramifications could be. So with that being said, I, in front of you tonight, I ask for your confidence and your support. The districts, residents of District 3 and the City of Lowell should not go without representation for so much a day. I have 20 years' experience serving the City of Lowell. I was appointed to the Board of Appeals in 2003, where I served for 10 years, getting to know our neighborhoods inside and out. I was elected to the council in 2013, where I served two terms. Also, I've been on many various committees. Lowell Winterfest, Lowell Folk Festival, Chairman of the Mayor's Opioid Task Force since its inception in 2014, where many, many great things have been achieved. And many more voluntary unpaid positions that are far too many to mention, which I believe makes me the most qualified, experienced candidate to serve with you and the residents of District 3 in the city to hit the ground running. This is a very pivotal time in the City of Lowell where we need experienced leadership. I feel strongly, I bring that to the table. Now, I don't want to come off sarcastic here, with all due respect to the councilors and the speakers and the viewers at home. But we're not appointing a judge here tonight. The residents of Belvedere will have a preliminary election in just a little over 12 months, in September of '24, where all applicants are allowed to get on the ballot and run for election to serve District 3. I was on the ballot just last November, put in the sweat equity and the work that's involved in a campaign. Came up short, but not by much. The results? 3rd place in District 3, 4th place at large. Now, tonight, submitting a resume, coming in and speaking, and asking for an appointment? Heck, this is easy. But I've proven to you, councilors, that I put in the work to do what it takes to serve on this council. And it will serve the residents of District 3 loyally and diligently, I assure you. So tonight, I ask for your vote and your confidence, and let's get down to business. Thank you very much. Erin Gendron?
Hi, I'm Erin Gendron, 26 Wetherby. I have changed as a social worker. I've worked to protect the most vulnerable in this city for over 12 years. I'm also on the Board of Public Health. Worked through COVID with the Board of Public Health. I was appointed by this council twice. I'm a mom. I'm very vested. I'm a fresh face. I'm something... I'm young, and I represent a lot of the people in my neighborhood that are young and have children as well. Thank you.
Belinda Duran?
Hi there, I'm Belinda Duran, 109 Manser Street. I have chosen to live in Lowell. I've lived in Lowell for the last 17 years. The folks on the council know my resume, know my letter of interest, and many people in Lowell do, too, because I've been quite active in the city. But not everybody in District 3 yet knows who I am, which I think is unfortunate about this process. What I bring to what I would bring to being a city counselor is that when I commit, I show up and I do the work. I am analytical. I look at issues from all issues, or all sides. That's a part of my background, both as a software engineer, a manager, and a lawyer. I think about things from both the short and the long-term perspective. I listen, I learn, and I love Lowell. And I have thought for a long time about being a city counselor. This is not, you know, something that just popped into my head. You have seen me at these meetings because I want to learn. I have thought about running. Of course, John Leahy is a formidable opponent. And I wanted to understand the process before I ran. I wanted to also make sure that I had all the information needed to be in the best position. So I took the Lowell Plan Public Matters program this spring, graduating in June. And I feel that I've learned all I can to make the next step. I do think it's disappointing that we are not doing a special election. The fact that other people don't know who the candidates are, I think is very disappointing. On the other hand, I will not step down from the appointment process because I do think that I bring a lot of skills to the city. And I think I am the best qualified. But again, nobody else, except you, know that. But I would appreciate your consideration. And as always, making the decision that is in the best... That's best for the city as a whole. Thank you.
Ronald DeBerto? Adam Mitchell? No? Right here? Daniel Finn?
Mr. Mayor, were the candidates made aware that they had to even be here?
They were off to go, could've come if they wanted to. Rithi Young?
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, members of councils, Mr. Mayor, and all the peoples from District 3 and all from the City of Lowell. My name is Rithi Young. I is the former Lowell City Councilor. I was elected three terms in the '99, 2001, and 2003. And tragically, I just want to congratulate Council Lee He for your well-done and got through the home rule petitions. Unlike mine, I was somehow had a difficult time in making through the way. But anyway, I'm interested in this position because it's a field that I left 25 years ago. And I think so. In a short period of times, when I came to the United States, I speak no English. And within five, six years, I obtained a bachelor's degree from Boston University with full scholarship, a master's degree in education from UMass Amherst with full scholarships. So I met myself and just retired from Lowell High School last year. I have served many capacities in the city during my times, from CBA to local health centers, to gang task relationships, and work with Attorney General, District Attorney, to make sure that Lowell is a better place for all. In my campaign in 1999, I pledged to make sure that Lowell is a better city for all. And I encourage everyone to have a role to play in democracy. I'm too. I'm on support the people bills to select and to elect somebody that they feel comfortable, that have a role, somebody who will leaders that they trust to represent them. And that's why we have District Councils is all about. But unfortunately, that tonight, the council has to make the decisions. And I want to be one of them. I want to be one of yours, candidate that you can trust, and you can feel that I can be one of your colleagues that will bring make Lowell a much better city and make it a better place for everybody to play. I believe that I have the necessary tools to carry the task forward from Counsel Lee He. But the next council will be decided by your vote. I know tonight, you guys are gonna vote to decide who going to be the next council to be. But I want to be one of them. I'll be the one that you trust. I ask you for your support, and I believe that I will be a great addition to the city and to this council body. I thank for your vote tonight, and I thank for the city alone, and also especially those come from District 3 who came forward to support the special election tonight. I am with you. But for tonight, please, I ask for your support so that we can be, we can work together as colleagues to make sure Lowell is a better place for everybody. Thank you.
Martin Burke? No?
Mr. Mayor.
Those were all candidates that came forward with...
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Before we move forward with vote to appoint, can I make a motion to suspend the rules so we can consider 412? The reason I ask is the way this motion is worded, it's a motion to do something before taking other action. So I think we should consider that motion before we vote.
My consideration was, my thinking was, your motion to reconsider was defeated, so that would normally lead to 4... I mean, we're supposed to take a 412, that's the same thing, right?
This is slightly different. This is, you know, to give us more time. I mean, just...
Right in the middle of... Could've been done 10 minutes ago, you know? I mean...
It was second.
There's no motion on the floor at this point, though.
Counsel Janess to take 412 out of order, seconded by Counsel Getchier. Roll call to, on that motion to take 412 out of order, please, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, don't we normally just say...
Counsel Mercier.
Is this a vote to take this 4.12?
Why is this the only one we did that to?
I'm not gonna vote for it.
Well, it's not up to you. You're not the rule...
No.
We're gonna vote no, though.
I mean, normally...
Right. Normally, yes, but it's contention. So 412, taken out of order, Mr. Clerk.
Counsel Mercier.
No.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
No.
Counsel Scott.
No.
Counsel Yem.
No.
Counsel Chow.
No.
Counsel Dakota.
No.
Counsel Getchier.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Four years fails.
And back to 2.2. The submission selection of District 3 City Councilor. We'll start with a roll call, Mr. Clerk, and just say if you have a name that you want to vote for, go right ahead.
State the name of which you select during the roll call. Counsel Mercier.
Cory Belanger.
Counsel Noon.
Present.
Counsel Robinson.
Present.
Mayor Rourke.
Cory Belanger.
Counsel Scott.
Cory Belanger.
Counsel Yem.
Cory Belanger.
Counsel Chow.
Cory Belanger.
Counsel Dakota.
Cory Belanger.
Counsel Getchier.
Present.
Counsel Janess.
Present.
Cory Belanger has received 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 votes.
All right. Counsel Janess, congratulations. Thank you for putting your name forward and serving. I guess you'll be in touch with the clerk tomorrow morning, so... Off and there. Section 3, City Clerk, 3.1. Reappointment of Michael Q. Gary as City Clerk. Way the full reading and second reading by title. Reappointing of Michael Q. Gary to the position of City Clerk. We need a motion to adopt by Counsel Yem, seconded by Counsel Scott. Questions? Comments? Roll call.
Counsel Mercier.
Do we vote now?
Oh, gee, that's a tough motion right there. Oh, yes.
Counsel Noon.
Absolutely.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Dakota.
Yes.
Yes.
Council Getchea. Council Janes.
Yes.
That's a, it's a pass, yeah.
Congratulations, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, thank you, councillors. I appreciate your support, and it's a, I have to give a shout out, it's a good little, it's a birthday present to my 22-year-old tonight, Bren, so.
3.2, Man City, Council Me Me, July 9th, for acceptance. Motion accepted, filed by Council Getchea, seconded by Council Janes. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. City Council motions. 4.1, Council Dakota requests City Manager to have a proper department coordinate and schedule a meeting among Lowell High School administrators, school building committee, and city council representatives to meet with UMass Lowell Link administration for the purpose of educating Lowell High School administrators on the multiple opportunities post-secondary education and new building interrogation, integration presented by the Link Project with further goal of open communication and partnership with Link.
Second.
Seconded by Council Noon. Council Dakota.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, sorry for the long, long motion, but I think the timing is right. We're probably looking at both projects getting done in another couple of years around the same time, and it wouldn't be a bad time to have Lowell High School, the administration, and all get together on opportunities for some of our Lowell High School seniors for possible internships and other opportunities. Thank you.
Council Noon.
Great motion, Mr. Mayor. Council Dakota, this is certainly, is an exciting project, the Link Project. It's going to be a lot of beneficiaries to the city, a lot of people to cheer, and to coordinate this meeting so that all stakeholders learn more about the opportunity that Link Project will provide. That's a great thing. Thank you.
Any other? Council Getchea?
Could we add the other high school to this motion? There are two high schools.
Do you need a roll call for that?
He's mad, he's mad at me.
I just think we have another high school.
We'll add another educational school to that, too, Mr. Banjo, okay? All right. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.2, Council Dakota requests City Manager to provide an update on the conditions relative to the mold at the Patoka Memorial School, seconded by Council Mercier, Council Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember the city council, I was not part of it, but you, I think I got a copy in my first meeting, that there was a report from the state concerning the state of the Patoka Memorial School. And once again, I'm sitting here and I'm bringing up the same concerns from six staff members that have received calls since Friday. Bulletin boards in the main hallway, mold, rooms 1067, 1069, black mold spores on ceiling. The offices attached to the main office starting to smell like mildew and mold is starting to come on the walls. The two, I'm a little concerned, and I'm obviously not well-educated, and maybe Council Getchea can help me out here, but I thought that the ACs were supposed to help me, remediate that. And those two classrooms have air conditioning, and they're still the two that have the most mold spores. So, Mr. Manager, we really don't want to go through another Patoka Memorial School students not going to school on the first day of school. This has to be rectified, and if you don't mind, I'd like it to start tomorrow morning. If we can get some people there and find out what is going on, because we still have another five weeks till school, and that's, I guess, is when it gets real bad. So if you don't mind, I appreciate it, and if we can have an update in the next two weeks, that'd be great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Banjo.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the council. Council, thank you very much for this concern. It is a concern of ours as well. We will have an update by our next meeting. We're very well aware of the situation, but since you and I spoke about it again, but we will have an update on this matter and many others at our next council meeting.
Much appreciated.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.4, Council Mercier requests City Manager to dedicate a plaque to all involved in the creating and funding the Veterans Park on Douglas Road, seconded by Council Yem, Council Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yesterday, we had a wonderful ceremony, ribbon cutting, and I feel that a plaque should be created to acknowledge all the people that worked so hard to make, make that Veterans Park happen become a reality. I think it's tremendous. It's a credit to all our veterans of every branch. It was a moving ceremony, very, so spectacular, in my opinion, because I don't think that we do enough for the veterans, so to see that park transform from a little passive park to a beautiful place of honor for every branch of our service, I'm so honored and grateful for what happened there. But I'd like to acknowledge and thank those through a plaque that were instrumental in making that happen. Thank you.
Council Getchea?
Thank you, Mayor Rourke, and I agree with Council Mercier. It was a phenomenal celebration yesterday. But the one thing that we can add, Mr. Banjo, do, are we going to sub out that to a contractor to maintain that area, or are we looking at doing a donations pool so people can pay to have it maintained, or is that going to be city maintained in the end? Because right now, we are overloaded with city parks, and I'm just wondering, is it something that we could maybe take a donation collection up and start a fund that could actually do the landscaping over there? Because that's a lot of work.
Mr. Banjo?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the council. Council, at this time, it is, it's going to be city maintained. The organization or, organization of the group that put this together, they're still talking about some other things. I know that we're shy on a POW MIA flag, and of course, the plaque that Council Mercier had brought up there. So there are other things that we want to look at over there. I will speak with the group that helped spearhead this, as well as former Representative David Nagle.
Because that, I mean, just the fertilization to keep that grass the way it is and everything is going to be a challenge and a half. The other thing is, are we going to put up no dogs in that area? Because there's no signage saying no dogs, or are dogs allowed, or are they not? I don't know the answer if that's the will. That's what was the question yesterday.
Mr. Banjo?
Once again, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the council. Dog-friendly, but take care of your dog. We are looking at signs that are going to have that as well.
Can we also look across the street at the playground for the Riley School and put signs on there, no dogs in the playground?
We can, but we're in the process of, the Assistant City Manager, Ms. Rose, if you could give us an update on the $900,000, I think it is, we're going to be spending over there.
Yeah, thank you. So I think we do have an ordinance that doesn't allow dogs in parks. The Riley School playground is under design right now, and DPD will be moving that one forward to construction. That's the Belvedere Neighborhood ARPA project location, so that one's going to be completely renovated. So if we put signs up, we can consider including those newer signs in the rehabbed park when it's under construction.
I guess what I'm asking, Mr. Mayor, is through you to the manager, can we go over to the Riley School and put up a sign on the fence, no dogs allowed per ordinance, as soon as possible? They're asking for this, and that's what we're asking for, is that they put it up right now so that it stops them for the next year, that before that thing is built, that's all. Thank you.
Council Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank you, Council Getchea, for bringing that up. I did hear the conversation about the Riley School and the Veterans Parks as well. Just to extend the request by Council Getchea, I want, there's an ordinance in place already, but I wonder, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, if you could look at all the parks in the city, if there's an ordinance in place, and if there's currently no, you know, no dog sign at those parks. I don't know if this needs to be in a formal motion or not. If you could just put those signs, like no dogs, at all those parks, would you be able to do that? Just a CDY, a CDY request, basically. Thank you.
Mr. Banjo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. Yes, we can do that. It's, it's going to be an enforcement issue, ladies and gentlemen. It's going to be, that will be an issue on the actual enforcement. I mean, I live up next to the reservoir, for instance, and there are dogs walking there all the time, and it's, once again, it's one of those parks. We can absolutely put signs up, but it's an enforcement piece as well.
I guess I'm thinking more, and then maybe Council Getchea probably thinking the same thing, like the playground area, not so much like the entire park, I might have, didn't explain it the right way, but the playground area where the slides are, the swings are, and, you know, could just keep the dogs out of that area because it's a health issue for the kids.
Mr. Banjo?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the council. As far as the playgrounds go, that would be correct, but if it's okay with the council, I'm pretty confident that all of our parks are not necessarily dog-friendly, so maybe we can get a report back to you to find out what, how we want to move forward when it comes to a more passive park, similar to, I guess what I'm saying is up by the reservoir, people have their dogs leashed, and I think we need to just maybe tweak that, but that, we can take a look at that. But it's absolutely, as far as the playgrounds are concerned, no dogs are allowed.
Council Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the same person got all of our ears at the Veterans Park, so I did call into Ms. Machado this morning to ask for signs to be put up there at the playground area. I do know, I live right across the street from a playground. Mine does have the signs up that say no dogs allowed. People do look at them, stop, and tie their dogs up outside the fence, so they do make a difference, you know. It's worth a try, I guess, but at least in the playground areas, because there's kids playing, we don't need dogs in there on the, you know. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. We did have, you know, we just gave him an extension, but he did screw up last week. Council Mercier actually filed a motion with the clerk to request the City Manager require all HHS Health Department employees to be CPR certified, so we'll just take that right now by Council Mercier, seconded by Council Yem, Council Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I did make this motion two weeks ago, and inadvertently, through a lot of hard work, got overlooked, but that's okay. We're suspending the rules to bring this in. But I don't make a motion unless I talk to whoever it would be responsible in that department so that I don't overburden them or, you know, see if my motion would be warranted, or I don't want to, you know, step on anybody's toes, so I did call Lisa Golden and told her, if I made this motion, would this burden you or whatever? She said it would not, she could not do that right away, but she sees it down the road in a few months that she would arrange for this to happen. So that would be good if all human health services and Health Department employees be CPR certified. That'd be good, because who knows? Maybe I would be needing those services. You never know. So, thank you very much.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 4.7, Council Noon requests City Council adopt a resolution standing in solidarity with the United Staff of Lowell Telecommunications Corporation, who are negotiating a first contract with management for better working conditions and calling on management to bargain in good faith to resolve this contract swiftly with the same security protections afforded to all other United private sector workers in Massachusetts. Seconded by Council Getchea.
Hello, and thank you. I'm Adam McCune. I'm the Executive Director of LTC, and I appreciate the, the time to be able to speak here. When LTC's board and union first entered into negotiations with the staff, the union's negotiators asked these proceedings to be private, especially to the press and to social media. The organization was saddened to learn that staff decided to take a path of airing our discussions in public through demonstrations and ultimately a limited strike this weekend during the Folk Festival. Certainly at this point, LTC needs to use this moment to correct some sentiments that are being expressed and talked about in the community. Our last negotiation session was June 14th, and the staff walked away from the table. Their representation said that they would be in touch. Last Thursday night, the staff gave an ultimatum to the board to accept a union security clause or they would strike during LTC's volunteer-led coverage of the Folk Festival. They also urged, they also used a legal distinction of unfair labor practices, so those charges that were used to justify the strike. These charges are investigated by the National Labor Rights Board, and we are still in the beginning of this process. While this has been an ongoing situation, needless to say, a week to solve a legal issue is certainly not enough. Our organization, made up of volunteer board members, is trying very hard to figure out what the right thing to do is with this situation. This does not mean that we are against our employees, against their rights, or even necessarily against a union security clause. We do have questions, though. In the nonprofit world, unions are uncommon. In public access TV, I would call them rare. And through the negotiation process, I would say we are learning a lot, just as the union is learning a lot about public access TV. It's a situation that LTC enters with an abundance of caution. As a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and public access center, we are mostly funded by franchise fees. These are essentially usury fees for people who choose to use Comcast services for television. It's a cost of doing business for entities like Comcast. It's been this way since the Cable Franchise Act of 1984, and there have been updates to this federal law in the years since. Those that choose to use Comcast's service in Lowell see the benefit of their cable TVs with events like this meeting tonight. But we also provide access to those meetings through our website, ltc.org, and this year we started streaming all of our meetings that are live onto YouTube. It should be noted that franchise fees are, in their nature, not taxpayer dollars. LTC tries to make everything we do about accessibility and accountability. LTC sent a statement to city councillors through our board. That statement is also on our Facebook page and was sent to the media. It's a long document, and I could read it here, but for the sake of brevity, I prefer that people take a look on our Facebook page if they wish and see for themselves. I also ask that people ask questions to see where both sides of this issue are and derive their opinions from. The long and short of that letter was to detail misrepresentations of this organization that have been made publicly. It also was to show that there is somewhat of a dire situation at LTC, and in fact, all public access stations in the country. Our finances are struggling. We've had three deficit budgets in a row and deal with, and to deal with, and when I was brought in last year in September, that was the main part of my focus as a manager. I want jobs to stay here, but with declining revenues that are beyond our control, it's a difficult task. Since 2018, we are down 29% in our franchise fees. We have no control over that number. We were down 6.7% just last year, and I expect to drop at least another 6% in this coming year. During negotiations, staff did ask for substantial raises, and I realize this is a process, and they are, that was their first offer. We want to keep jobs. The obvious math in this equation means that we would have to make cuts. We still might. It's a balance that doesn't seem to have a solution, but this organization is trying. Our pay is already above average for our industry in the state, and we are fortunate to offer insurance to our employees, 401K with a 3% match, and the usual vacation and sick benefits. Most companies, organizations, or nonprofits wouldn't like to be in this situation of having their personal decisions, personnel decisions, being openly discussed during a city council meeting. Those decisions should be private, and the reasons for those decisions cannot by law be discussed openly. In fact, personnel matters in the city are discussed in executive session. I had a colleague of mine who likes to say, we are the vessel, not the voice, and I think that's a true statement. LTC, and in fact, public access, operates on this principle. In a very real way, we are the actionable arm of the First Amendment. Resenting this meeting tonight is an example. Our studios are an example. Recently, we had a member come back to our studio for the first time since COVID hit. Within an hour of walking in, into the door, they had produced a new show in one of our new setups for a new studio and walked back out the door. That's what our mission is. While our end product is easily reachable and digested by the public, our opinions on certain topics honestly should not be. It allows us to be neutral entity in our community. I urge the council to simply not weigh in on this issue at all. I don't think it's one that's appropriate to be talked about in a city council setting. I don't think it's a good precedent for our city. I don't think it's a good precedent for LTC or nonprofits. I'm more than open to having discussions with officials and community members. In fact, I can go over detailed numbers with anybody who wants to about how this organization is attempting to solve this issue with anyone who would like, and if they want to, they can email me. I have the world's simplest emails, remember, adam@ltc.org. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Jonathan Grossman, 83, Varnamav. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. People who work for nonprofit organizations are workers just like everyone else. Yes, they work for an organization with a public mission. Yes, they work for an organization with a public mission. And yes, they work for an organization that may have a limited budget. And no, they don't expect to make big bucks by working there, but that does not mean they don't have to make a living. It doesn't mean that they don't want to be able to spend time with their families because they have to work two or three jobs to get by. It doesn't mean that they don't want to have some kind of say about what happens to them at work. All workers want that. People who work for nonprofits are no different. The folks at LTC, the people behind the cameras, haven't had a raise in two years, despite the inflation. They felt they needed a union and they organized one. That's not an easy thing to do. People don't do that unless they have a reason. So it's time for the LTC management to negotiate in good faith. The workers deserve a living wage. They deserve the right to have a union. They now have a union, and they deserve the typical security protections to maintain it, as almost all workers with unions have in this country. They deserve to be able to negotiate in good faith with their employer. We're not asking this city to tell LTC exactly what to do. But I think the government of the city should reflect the working people in this city and understand that in that situation, every worker would want what the LTC workers want. I want to thank Counsel Noon for making this motion and urge the council to support it. Thank you.
So I just want to go to the solicitor just for an opinion on this before going further, please, Mrs. Solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just wanted to point something out, that LTC and the City of Lowell are parties to a contract together. So when I look at, I think, the intent of this motion, I'm not sure it would be appropriate for the city council on behalf of the city to, one way or the other, influence the parties that are in the middle of negotiations. I just, I, I see that as an issue. And I mentioned something to the mayor, so I wanted to, you know, relay that to all of you.
So Counsel Noon, would you be interested in just for now, tabling it?
So Mayor, maybe we ought to have all the speaker that presents speak, and then if you need to be tabled, we can table. If we need to be discussed, we can discuss. I understand that negotiation is confidential for some reason. Neither I nor Mike Harley brought out whatever, you know, happening out there. The intent of the motion, basically, I know that this is difficult for both party, the staff and the board. This is new to them in term of unionizing. I know that both party want to get to an agreement. And basically, simply asking both party, urge both party to get back to the table and negotiate, you know, in a very, you know, a good faith. Basically, that's that. And of course, we, City of Lowell, you know, work closely with our union, and that's partly why I'm asking. But also, I heard as well, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, a speaker spoke of the directors of LTC in term of the financial struggle that LTC has facing. I was going to ask also that, and I know that a while back, Mr. Managers have, you know, mentioned something about want to contribute to helping building up a pipeline talent at LTC, maybe some sort of annual financial assistance go a long way on that. So however, I would like the speaker, those who signed up to speak says, you know, continue on. And if we have to table it per the solicitor opinion, we can do that.
All right, thank you. Mrs. Solicitor?
Mr. Mayor, through the solicitor, could we discuss, not, obviously, we don't even know the specifics of the situation, but do we have at least the purview to discuss overall a stance, a general stance on a situation? As opposed to, because again, none of us have specifics of any of this stuff, and nor am I looking for that.
Yes, so absolutely you can. And my, the suggestion I was going to make to Counsel Noon was, what you just described, if you wanted to amend your motion, what you just said was perfectly appropriate, in my opinion. You're encouraging both sides to get to the table, to find a way to make it work. I think that, that position would be appropriate. I think just the way it's written, maybe it's a little too far in one direction, but what you just said would be appropriate, if that's just a suggestion.
I will be more than willing to do that. It's not my intent to be a referee in this, you know, negotiation. I know that both party, in their heart of heart, they want to resolve this. They want to get back on the table, and that's the only way to do it. At the end of the day, both party, I know, realize that they know they're not going to get everything they've wanted. It has to be some compromise at the end of the day, so that they are important party in the city in term of accessing, local access for our viewer. Either be council meeting, board and commission, and or school committee, and so on, and so many other things that they've done for our city. So, thank you.
So Counsel Noon, so there's something like amended motion to encourage both sides to continue entering in good faith negotiations for the best possible outcome?
That's fine.
Mr. Clerk, get that?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Robinson. Mrs. Solicitor, you have any concerns about public speakers stating anything either way?
No, I do not.
All right, so if you want to continue with that, that's fine.
Jeff Thomas, 76 Baldwin Street, Lowell, Mass. Union member, different, different union member from a different union, but I love me a good union battle. They're not asking the city council to vote this up, down, good, bad, and different. They're asking for support from you guys, whether it's a clap, a handshake, whatever it may be. They're not asking you to tell LTC to vote or come to a agreement with them. They're not asking that. They're asking for support. That's all they're asking for. So I don't know where there's some issue. I'm aware that, you know, Lowell funds LTC. That's, that's great. That's awesome. I watch this mainly on TV, so I love it. But when workers from a small, as Mr. McKeon stated, small telecommunications company that, it's very rare that you see them unionize, this is discouraging these companies and these workers to unionize. And you have the right to unionize in this country. Unfortunately, you know, people don't see that, and people don't know that. But I'm, give these guys a whole bunch of courage and support as much as I possibly can to make this happen for them. Yeah, it's their first contract. It's very, very difficult, the first contract. It is. But they're only asking for support. They're not asking you to tell them to do this or tell them to do that. They just want support. There's other union members that sit on this council from other unions. I don't know, I haven't spoken to them directly, but I know they're union members. Do they support another union? Do they support another union member? Well, they should. We should all come in solidarity as union members and stand up for what's right for the workers that have formed a union in this city, especially this hard-working city where the workers are all about the work. These guys deserve a fair living wage, closed shops, whatever it may be that's on the table, they should be allowed to have that. These guys are doing great. They figured out all the kinks and the freezes and all the stuff that goes on on TV. It all works now. I don't know what they've done, but these guys are the guys that have done it. So fix it. Let's get these guys a contract. And I don't know if I can say this or not, but I'm going to appoint the rest of my three minutes for 412 that I'm not going to speak on now because my voice was taken from that. And I'll appoint that three minutes to Mr. McKeon to negotiate with the workers for three more minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Van, Van May Ma, 346 Princeton Boulevard. I'm speaking in support of motion 4.7. Like many others, I wrote to the board in support of union security and a livable wage. And like many others, I received an email that said that LTC offers employees a competitive salary, 75% paid health insurance, matching 401(k), short-term disability, and generous paid time off. I then followed by saying that a competitive salary is not a livable salary. For example, Starbucks has a competitive salary compared to Wendy's, but neither $15 nor $18 an hour can adequately pay for housing and other basic needs. I then received a response from another board member saying, quote, "I find your analogy of Starbucks and Wendy's valid but misguided. We are a very different organization with an entirely different set of priorities and problems," unquote. I find their explanation interesting, because if corporations like Starbucks somehow began to have a more altruistic mission, would the conversation behind wages then change? Is someone serving coffee or flipping burgers less deserving of a livable wage? Or is that only reserved for the highly educated or morally altruistic person? My answer is that everyone is deserving of a livable wage. And I am aware that entities like Starbucks is a for-profit corporation, and LTC is a nonprofit. One looks to profit by selling or trading their goods, and the other looks to complete its mission with funding from foundations, the government, or community donations. The issue that I've mentioned of needing a livable wage is applicable to both circumstances because both organizations are looking to either profit or remain afloat, break even, and/or invest their fundings to grow. And in both cases, labor costs are what is within a business's control to meet said goals, and underpaying workers is a common theme. It is also not lost on me that LTC board hired Littler Mendelson during the unionizing process. For a board member to say that they, compared to corporations like Starbucks, are very different with an entirely different set of priorities and problems, I find it very interesting that both Starbucks and LTC leadership came to the same conclusion of hiring one of the biggest union-busting law firms to challenge employee unionizing. With our federal government approving homelessness as a crime, more and more people are being funneled into the carceral system. An organization that is capable of paying the ED six figs, but staff less than 60k while housing and food costs are astronomical, is one that is contributing to this dehumanizing process. LTC isn't the only one with this issue such as livable wages, but while we are addressing this here and now, agreeing to those said asks will only contribute to a strong foundation for staff and the organization in itself. If we want good quality production, we must make sure the staff are properly supported. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am Najifat Tangji, my resident of 780 Broadway Street. I am speaking on motion 4.7 and in solidarity with the Lowell Telemedia Center staff members who have been negotiating for a fair contract for more than a year. As a resident of Lowell, I have seen firsthand the incredible contributions that LTC staff members make to the local community. They empower the community by creating a platform for members coming from marginalized backgrounds and provide them with media production tools and resources. Through such significant work, LTC staff members help Lowellians amplify their voice, which is fundamental to establishing media democracy and citizen journalism. I personally have learned the basics of media production from them, ranging from how to operate a camera to how to run studio productions. As a woman of color, learning media production from LTC staff members was significant to me, as it provided me with the tools to amplify my voice and advocate for my rights through media production. I have seen the LTC staff members covering social justice-related events at the University of Massachusetts Lowell, which helps uplift the messages and values of justice and equity among communities. I have also witnessed them covering the Lowell Folk Festival every year and help uplift the diverse arts and culture in Lowell through media production. LTC staff members also cover Lowell City Council events, which helps the community to stay updated on local politics. Given such incredible services that LTC staff members give to the community, it is extremely concerning to me that they do not earn a livable wage. It is an issue of basic human rights. As hard-working members of the community, LTC staff members deserve a livable wage and a fair contract. They should not struggle to afford the skyrocketing cost of housing and basic necessities. Their labor runs LTC, and they should be paid a livable wage for their labor. I would also propose a question for us to think. Why does nobody, no staff members at LTC make a livable wage except the executive director of LTC? Lowell's history is one of labor history. Upholding the values of Lowell's rich labor history that made revolutionary improvements to workers' rights, I urge the Lowell City Council to support LTC staff members. Thank you for listening.
Good evening. My name is Paul Godet. I live at 4 Bertram Street in Lowell. I speak this evening as the board president of Merrimack Valley Project and as acting chair of our Lowell chapter. Merrimack Valley Project organizes faith communities, labor unions, and community organizations to work for social justice in our community. In this capacity, we support Counsel Noon's motion for the council to go on record calling on LTC management to bargain in good faith with its workers, who are calling for the security of a negotiated contract that will provide union protections under federal and Massachusetts laws. LTC's workers are highly skilled professionals who deserve the respect and the pay package that is commensurate with their talents. The telecommunications space is a public good, and Lowell is fortunate to have such a high-quality operation serving our citizens. But it is the duty of government to prevent the exploitation of workers through our laws, our institutions, and our regulations. This is your role as our council, to speak up when there is harm in our community. Please add your collective votes in support of the LTC employees for a living wage, respect for workers, and job security through a union contract. Thank you.
So we have four additional speakers that do not live within the city, and I'm not sure have any tie-in to LTC. So I'll take a motion if someone wants to make one, or how do you want to do it? Leave me a motion to suspend the rules.
Mr. Mayor, while they're here, so I make a motion to suspend the rule.
Counsel Noon, seconded by Counsel Robinson. All in favor, say aye. Go ahead, Mr. Clerk.
Thank you for having me here today. I'll be brief. I know it's a long agenda, but my, where I started in media was public access, and I'm still proud to say that. I started in Tewksbury, worked in Wilmington, and worked at Lowell Telemedia Center, where I had the honor to work with wonderful staffmates. And I know firsthand what I went through, and I don't have to convince anybody, no matter who they are, what I went through, because I experienced it. And I would unionize again, and I would do it all over again, because I know it was worth it. It taught me to have a voice. It taught me to stick up to other, for other people who felt that they didn't have a voice. I'm in a union now. I've made a good job, and I chose that job because it was at a union. And I'm sorry to be upset, I really am, but this has been going on for a long time. I mean, maybe not to some, but I just want better. Deep down, that's all I want, is just better and transparency. That's it. And I want community media to be communal and not selective. And I want, I want the mission statement of Lowell, of LTC being the voice of Lowell around the world, to be legitimate and actually upheld. My family came here from the Azores and from Madeira to escape poverty. My grandmother, their daughter, worked for a union, counsel, asked me, Council 93, and she died proud to be a union worker. And I know right now she's proud of me for doing what I'm doing right now. And I'm not going to leave my Azorian community here. And I'm not going to leave my Azorian community here because of this. I'm done silent running, and I want to stay, and I love, I love the community of Lowell, but something's got to give, and my call, my former colleagues and just union workers and workers alike deserve better and better transparency. And that's really all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Dan.
Oh, I'm so sorry. My address for the record is 9 Washington Street, AR, Massachusetts, 01432. Thank you so much, counselor. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, going forward, can we ask their address, and if they're outside the city and do not work for LTC, that we follow the council rules as we have in the past, please?
So while you are in the back, motion?
No, no, I know, I know they do, but if anybody does going forward, if they can just state it.
Dan Toomey. He should be on Zoom. Dan Toomey?
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, you can't see me, but I guess you can hear me. Okay.
Go ahead, yeah.
Hi, all right. Thanks for taking my, giving me the opportunity to speak. And I, hang on a second. Well, anyway, I, I would like to ask the Lowell City Council to support article 4.7. I, I live in Nashville, New Hampshire, 10 Latin Lane. I worked in Lowell for 20 years. I worked at the university, and then I worked at LTC for maybe 12 years. And I recently retired from there a couple of years. So I'm familiar with it, and, you know, I love what they do, and I'm glad to see they're still doing it. I know it was mentioned by the executive director that they may have to make cutbacks, but it seems to me that they've already made cutbacks. There's significantly less staff than when I was there, especially when I was first there. We used to have 10 or 12 employees, and now they're down, I think, to six. So they've made cuts in terms of employees, you know? Maybe they can make cuts in some other areas. And, and one thing that the city council can do, I mean, the franchise fee comes through the city council, perhaps the city council can find a way to, you know, give a little bit more of that percentage to LTC so that in fact that they are able to deal with some of the issues they have with getting better wages and working conditions. Okay, in addition to this, the union members, as far as I know, have expressed the perception they've been unfairly treated by having unwanted discipline imposed upon them by LTC's management. And three unfair labor practice charges are, have been filed, and they're still in the works. They haven't had a hearing on those things. I would hope that, you know, people just step back and, and try to teach, treat each other with respect, and just employees enjoy, employees form unions because they've come to the conclusion that better served by negotiating wages and benefits or grieving differences as a group rather than as individuals. This should be done without clear retribution. Hopefully, passage of article 4.7 will help bring both sides in this standoff to put aside their differences and come to agreement. Thanks, folks, for the opportunity to speak.
Welcome. Michael Wilkins.
All right, I'm going to try to keep my comments to the three minutes instead of the six that Mr. McCune was given. Good evening. My name is Michael Wilkins, and I live at 36 School Lane in Watertown, Massachusetts. I'd like to first thank the city council for allowing me this chance to address you and the citizens of Lowell. While not currently living here, I do want to give some of my Lowell bona fides. I was born here in Lowell at Lowell General while my dad was attending Lowell Tech at the time. After honorably serving the United States Marine Corps, I came back to here to go to school and studied at U Lowell at the time, University of Lowell. I also worked here for Arnold Lerner. Some of you might remember the WLLHWSSH broadcast out of the old Giant Building on 4 Broadway. I'm also the president of the NABIT CWA Local 51018, with whom the workers at LTC have organized and with whom the National Labor Relations Board has recognized. By the way, NABIT stands for National Association of Broadcast Employees and Technicians. CWA stands for Communication Workers of America. I'm not here to negotiate the contract in this forum. That's not what we're here for. But as many know, the bargaining process, especially in its first iteration, can be slow and daunting, but it shouldn't be made unnecessarily so. At the moment, the process has been bogged down over reluctance by LTC leadership to accept boilerplate language regarding union security. I'm not going to give you the definition of union security here. You can look it up. It's quite easily found. But I would like to take a moment to address this, this point. Union security is boilerplate language, found in collective bargaining agreements in states up and down the West Coast, in Montana, Colorado, New Mexico, over to Minnesota, Missouri, down to Illinois, from Michigan and Ohio across Pennsylvania to Washington DC, and up and down, up the eastern seaboard to all of New England. In fact, as you all know, or should know, the city of Lowell has union security clauses in all of its contracts with its unionized organizations. I'm not going to give you the list I had and even made copies of all the contracts. We're not going to go through that, but I hope I've made a point that the union security clause is not unusual, and it's not even unusual in a nonprofit organization. I work for a nonprofit organization. You might have heard it. Let's, WGBH, nonprofit organization down in NPR, they have a union security contract clause. This is not as unusual as you may be told. I think I've made my point. A union security clause is not unusual, and I and the recognized union members of LTC urge the city council to adopt the resolution before you, as amended, to show support for the efforts of these individuals and workers in securing their first and fair contract free from unwarranted stonewalling, unfair labor practices, and irrelevant excuses. I'd like to address two quick things that Mr. McCune mentioned. Please talk to your people who are broadcasting and distributing this, this meeting after the fact. Get their side of the story. There may be a reason why they walked out of a meeting. And that's all I'm going to say about that. Again, thank you for this opportunity and hopefully your support.
Counselor Thomas Reche.
Yeah. He's not here. Just one more after that.
And Mary Kickless?
Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thank you all, the speaker who was here, just spoke. I mean, the theme of it tonight, you heard that everyone spoke of an exceptional service and work that LTC has provided and continued to do so for this city and its residents. The theme also kind of that they are in unfinished negotiation. They need to step back, or step, step back in, you know? I would, I would urge them to return to the table and negotiate this in good faith, because it's, you know, it's the only way to do. You know, so that's why, you know, I, I, I want my council, my colleague to support this as we move forward, as they move forward to negotiate this in good faith.
Thank you. I thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. I thank all the speakers. Again, it's never going to be a one-sided victory, and I think both parties are well aware of that. I think there is common ground and a compromise to be found. As we discussed, we hope that both parties will continue those discussions and conversations. I do have one kind of request or something I'd like to bring to my colleagues in the city's attention at least. I, I know the funding mechanism over there is different than anything else that we really have with partnerships, and I've also seen in the past where the administration and my colleagues have more than willing stepped up and said, you know, how can we make some of our allies better allies? Is it possible to do something to assist in those areas? And maybe that's something on our end we need to take a hard look at. Can we do a little more? And, and again, from a union standpoint, to justify wage increases, conditions of employment should be something that, that's a given. I mean, everybody deserves great working conditions, fair working conditions. That's, that goes without saying. Wages increased, we dealt with it even here. We were seeing we couldn't retain good people. We wanted to attract good people. So what did we do? We looked to increase wages, salaries. I mean, that's standard. I also think we have to take a look at the service we've been getting. LTC, I mean, just in the past maybe four years, if you look at the transition, I personally think as a resident, the service that we've been getting has been tenfold better. We have more counselors now, just for the council's standpoint, and it's wide open to introducing media. We're allowed to bring in video, audio, pictures, whatever it may be, to kind of highlight what we're discussing on the floor. We also saw times where it was pointed out that certain committees or boards weren't being televised or recorded, and what did they do? They sprung to action and started recording and televising. So I think they, they've bent and adapted and grown with the needs of the city and the community. Election time, they put out a lot of great content, and it's, as the executive director discussed, it's neutral content. It's just presenting what your options are and your choices are, and I think that's been well received by our residents. So again, I encourage both parties to please stay at the table and try to work through these difficulties. It's your first contract, as another speaker mentioned, and there's growing pains with all of it. I think you have some great people involved over there, but as far as us, I think I would urge my colleagues and the administration, if we could take a hard look, and is there room for us to kind of help a little more than what we're currently doing? Is there room for us to do something different that would give them a little bit more freedom to have these conversations? I think it's something that we should consider. Thank you very much.
Counselor Getchere.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I have been a union member for 35-plus years, and one, one thing you find is when you get to this stage is you have to come back to the table and find common ground. That's why they usually use mediators to try to find that common ground. And I don't think anything productive is going to happen until people start to see that there is common ground between employees and administration, and what are the goals, and they set them. So I think to build an organization, you have to recognize each person's value and come back to that table. So that's the first thing I would suggest to them is, you know, if you're going to do this, you have to recognize, and somebody has to be the mediator in between to try to bring some stubborn people to the table. And if it's just a boilerplate piece, then, I mean, you may have to give up a little to get a little. So I think that that's the key to it, is hopefully both sides after tonight can sit down and find common ground, because all you're going to do is throw your money at attorneys on either side, and at the end of the day, the money spent on the attorneys could have been spent in a more productive way. Thank you.
Counselor Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to thank everyone who came down and spoke on this tonight. I know we have LTC staff members here, we have LTC management here, we have LTC board members here, we have union representation here. Everyone's here because they're very passionate about this. They're passionate about the work that LTC does. They're passionate about what it means to the community to have an organization like LTC operating here in the city of Lowell. I really appreciate all the work that people have put in so far to get to the point where we are, but, you know, getting across the finish line is, is going to take more work, and it's going to take more time at that table. So, and I just would like to encourage everyone to try and get back to the table as soon as possible so that this can be worked through. I grew up, my dad was a union guy in a couple of different unions, through some different work that he had done. And so I know the value of growing up in a union household and what that brings to the table. So I just want to say that I appreciate the work that everyone's doing to get, get this across the finish line, and I hope to hear that everyone's meeting at a table to move this forward as soon as possible. And I look forward to when we can celebrate a contract being accepted and agreed to and in place, and being the foundation for LTC for years to come. So thank you, everyone.
Counselor Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank Councilor Noon for putting this motion. It's a very important motion. As everybody here have heard, we all support the working class men and women, and support a living wage for, for everyone. My, my question is through you, Mr. Mayor, to the solicitor. I, I thought I heard earlier that because of the detail of the motion, this might not be voteable tonight, and if that is the case, I know that Counselor Robinson and one of the speaker earlier mentioned if we could amend, if the maker of the motion agrees to it.
It's already been amended, Counselor. It's already been amended.
It's already been amended? Okay. And then it's something that can vote, something we can vote on tonight to show support? Okay, thank you.
Comments? Read the motion, Mr. Clerk, please.
All right. A substitute motion, encourage both sides to return to the table and resolve issues regarding, regarding continued services in the community.
By Councilor Noon, seconded by Counselor Mercia Rokoff.
Counselor Mercia.
Absolutely, yes.
Councilor Noon.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
Counselor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Dakota.
Yes.
Counselor Getchere.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
4.8, Councilor Noon, request city manager work with the DPD to install banners in Cambodian Town along Middlesex and Broad Streets. Seconded by Counselor Mercia, Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Many years ago, along Middlesex and Broadway, we, the city, had banners along that, on the city pole, but also on National Grid pole as well. We did have in turn some sort of agreement with National Grid. So the banner will be along that area because as you go into a Cambodian Town, right? So the banners was there for a number of years. Now, the last couple, the last maybe, I say, six, seven year, it's gone. So I'm asking that, you know, the city look into, you know, put out those banners, or maybe, you know, get a new banner. I don't think the cost is that much, because the banners that you had before, I think the special event coordinator or special event office with DPD did that back in, I believe, before 2000, before 2020, actually, 2015, maybe, 2016, somewhere around there, for a number of years, and then it's all gone. I don't know where it go. So that's really how people to identify as you're coming into the Cambodian Town area. There was a discussion also having a, a gauge, but the, the gauge will cost too much, right? I, I know that, so, you know, so we, we looking for something that costs the city minimal to identify so that people come to the city of Lowell from outside of Lowell, know where Cambodian Town's at.
Counselor Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilor Noon, for bringing this up. I'm proud to say that I was part of the Cambodian Town Committee, and we had met a few administrations ago with DPD, who work closely with the committee from Cambodian Town. There was new design that was presented, but then the new There was new design that was presented, but then the new administration came in and it was somehow disappeared. We were able to view it and then we're supposed to be posted. So I'm asking as part of the Cambodian Town project that the city allocate money and there are stages that the city are doing, but instead of waiting until the Clemente Island Parks Project is done, Phase Two will be the street around Cambodian Town and Phase Three is the gate that the city was planning as part of the Cambodian Town. So I would encourage the city to look into, display the banner because we August, August 15th coming Water Festival, so if we could have the new banner placed in there, that would be really, really helpful. I know some of the DPD staff may still remember where the banner was, were, and maybe try to relocate it and then work with the people that designed and then we'll have the banner fly it again along Middlesex Street coming from the new courthouse toward Cambodian Town. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Four point nine, Council Noon, request city manager update the city council with the correction of misspelled Khmer language on the welcome boulder at South Common. Seconded by Council Mercier, Council Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I got so many phone call and a lot of those phone call from the same person that that is not, doesn't look good for the city to have that welcome boulders on South Commons, you know, misspelled still there, you know? And I see the motion respond on B, fire safety. Wonderful work that the fire department have done in term of do fire prevention education and all that. If you look at the translation into Khmer, oh my God, I just showed you a number of people here who came tonight, they're saying that's not acceptable. And I know that it's probably many more translation, there's Google translation. Please, this is unacceptable. Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through the council. Council, that is in process in regards to the South Common piece and we're well aware that the state's translations are not correct. So before we do put that out, and that's motion B that you had talked about, we will be running it by one of our partners in the area to make sure that that is in good order, the translation part that is.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Four ten, Council Getchea, request city manager have the LPD provide a report on the number of motor vehicle tickets written last fiscal year and the percentage paid. Seconded by Council Janess, Council Getchea.
Thank you, Mayor Rourke. I had spoken to the chief on this issue and I'm just wondering, as they write, how many tickets, what the amount was that was written? How many are waived by the court? How many actually get paid without going to the court? And what is the percentage we get back from the court to the city? I'm just wondering, is that a high number, is that a low number? Because if we're writing tickets, what's the support to the system that maybe we can go out and hire more officers based off if we wrote more tickets for the issues that are going on? That's the gist of it and I had spoken to the chief on it. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Four eleven, Council Getchea, request city manager have the LPD patrol Miyani Car Wash located at 1700 Middlesex Street for loud music and vehicles speeding after dark. Seconded by Council Janess, Council Getchea.
Mr. Mayor, I want to thank the Lowell Police for stepping that up because they have been out there a lot lately since the motion was put forth and I thank the assistant city manager for getting over there, but, you know, these kids are collecting in an area and just disregarding every rule. They just want to do their thing and I don't think it's the kids who normally hang out. There's an app that people are jumping from one community to another and they're just gathering, going and doing what they think is normal, but it doesn't fit within and the neighbors are absolutely upset over there because they're racing through Princeton Boulevard, down Wood Street, right up Middlesex Street. The whole area has become a raceway and I guess if you could just step up patrols down there and just watch that area. Thank you.
Council Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Council Getchea, for bringing this forward. I just wanted to add to this that this is not an issue unique to Lowell as Counsel Getchea mentioned, you know, folks are meeting up for this everywhere. Last Friday, the city of Worcester made 53 arrests at what they were calling an illegal car show. I don't know what statutes were used to justify those arrests, but I would just ask that we take a look at that, particularly if there are any ordinances that exist in the city of Worcester to discourage this kind of situation that we might be able to adopt here. I don't know if there's anything we can leverage, but, you know, we saw some, we've seen issues. The neighbors are clearly fed up and, you know, I want to make sure we do, we as a body do what we can to kind of diffuse the situation before anything else negative happens in our community. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Oh, sorry, Council DeCotto, go ahead.
Real quick, Mr. Mayor, since this is private property, city manager, have we attempted to talk to the owner of the car wash over there?
Mr. Manager? Assistant City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. We had a health inspector go over there yesterday and try and reach out and have a conversation with the general manager, to no success, but she's going back tomorrow. This was more for the cleanliness and everything that was going on there yesterday, which they cleaned up right away, but they're trying to get in touch with somebody higher over there.
After a couple of attempts, can we send a certified letter to them?
Yeah, well, if they're in violation, we'll issue fines, but no fines were issued as of yesterday for the trial.
Thank you.
Council Getchea.
One question is, at these car washes that are open 24 hours a day, are they required to man them? Like when we had the barroom issues and everything, you know, these car washes are 24 hours a day and there's nobody there, so it's, and the lighting has gone down. If we can actually ask them to put the lights back on so that it actually illuminates the place and that we can also talk to them and say, look, you know what, if you're gonna be 24 hours, maybe we need to do something as a body and say, if something's open 24 hours, there should be somebody there to man these things because it's out of control.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Four twelve, Council Getchea, Council Robinson, request city council take a vote to support home rule petition S2878 and allow maximum amount of time for city charter for state to approve Senate bills 2878 before taking any other action. No second needed.
Thank you. We've already appointed, obviously, for the position and as the solicitor stated, can we get the language that was drafted pretty much approved and sent back to whoever is waiting for that language as part of that process to see if there is a shot for this to move forward with the home rule petition? Because I think that was the only sticking point according to the solicitor, correct?
Mr. Solicitor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so the language itself is fine. At this point, we just need the city council to give the city manager the authority to convey that to the delegation and then the House will pick it up from there.
Okay, so should we call for approval on that piece right now under this discussion? I would like to make a motion to call for approval.
You probably get a substitute motion first, right?
Okay, so make a motion to approve this recommendation, but allow, Council Getchea, thank you.
So I would make a substitute motion, request the city council take a vote to support home rule petition S2878 and ask the city manager to provide the delegation with the language that the state is looking for to get this through approval at this time.
Second, that's amendable.
Does that make sense through you to the city solicitor?
Mr. Solicitor, yeah?
Yep, thanks, Mr. Mayor, yes. That's exactly how it should go.
All right, thank you.
Council Mercier.
But that doesn't interfere with what took place earlier this evening. This is for the future. If this should happen again, let's say like Counselor Zakari Chow got appointed and so this would be in the future. Okay, fine.
So what do you want to do with the?
So I guess.
A roll call?
We need a roll call.
If we can do a roll.
Substitute motion?
Yes.
Roll call vote on the substitute motion, please.
Yep.
Right. So what language are we gonna add?
Isn't it the preliminary stuff that was sent by the state?
Yes, it's to, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor, yes, it's to include that there will be no preliminary of the special election and that was added most recently and with the authority granted today, we would just confirm that the city is okay with that change and then the legislation can move forward.
Okay, so could we get a roll call on the substitute motion, please?
Council Clerk? I got it. Roll call.
Council Mercier.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel DeCotto.
Yes.
Counsel Getchea.
Yes.
Council Janess.
Yes.
Four thirteen, Council Chow.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, Mr. Clerk, could you just let me know when that communication is prepared? I'm gonna presume that you're gonna have the city manager write this with the concurrence and as soon as you do that, we'll get it done.
I'll send, I send the correspondence up to the manager after the meeting, the day after the meeting regarding the motions that were passed.
Like the last amendment, the clerk will require an embossed seal, raised embossed seal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Four thirteen, Council Chow, myself, request city manager repair and repair basketball court on Dover Street. Council Chow.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank the resident who brought up this attention to the mayor and to me. The Dover Street area, that's a very dense neighborhood and the neighborhood is very fortunate to have this basketball court, but it's in disrepair right now. The motion is straightforward. If the managers could take a look at it and make improvement or repair to it, we would appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm also as well. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Communications.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, please, if I could suspend the rules before we go into communication to let Cole Barnes speak on his petition that he has before the council.
What's that, Counsel?
It's 11.2, 11.2.
By Council Mercier, seconded by Council Getchea. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. 11.2 miscellaneous, Cole Younger Barnes, request permission to address city council regarding proposed care for homeless act.
How you doing, Mr. Mayor? I live at 193 Middlesex, as you know, that's the homeless shelter. I'm a homeless man myself, but I'm speaking on behalf of all the homeless people here in Massachusetts. Lowell's been my home since 2016 and I love Lowell. Lowell is a great place to be. I mean, I'm originally from Nashville, Tennessee, and I moved up here in 2016. And what I'm trying to do is trying to get another shelter built because the homeless problem is getting bigger and bigger every day here in Lowell. We got problems that we have to deal with and I'm also asking for the funding for the people that's already tried to help us and maybe get that done if we can. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Your motion is set to place on file by Council Mercier, seconded by Council Janess. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion passes. Let's go back to motion responses. Is there a motion to take H out of order by Council Getchea, seconded by Counsel Robinson to take motion response H out of order? We have someone here from the Merrimack Valley Housing Program. I'm sure she'd like to go home as soon as she could, so we'll take motion response H out of order. Council Getchea.
Let the speaker speak first.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. Hi, Mayor Rourke and council members. Am I loud enough? It's past my bedtime. I know, I go to sleep at night. Anyhow, I'm here in regards to motion response that Counsel Getchea put through. If you have any questions for me, Executive Director of Merrimack Valley Housing Partnership, did I say that? Again, I'm just here to say thank you for the support. As a new executive director of Merrimack Valley Housing Partnership, I've been shy around two years, but with the organization for almost 11 years. You know, the support of the city of Lowell in regards to the down payment assistance and helping homeowners in the city of Lowell have the dream of homeownership, right? As I was a participant, everyone knows my story, went through the program, bought a home, but we are changing and we're doing other things with the partnership in regards to helping developers create affordable housing for homeownership opportunities. I'm gonna take this moment and say that Acre Crossing, we still have units available for sale in the Acre neighborhood. I want to thank Counsel Yem for supporting us always. We appreciate you. Yeah, so I'm open for questions in regards to the motion. If you all, I'm sure you read your packet and if you have any questions? Yeah.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We love what you do, but I don't know that the down payment is kept up with inflation. So as the homes are going up, you know, $10,000 used to be a 10% or a 15% down payment on most homes now and now we're at 11,800, it's not even 1%, you know, it ain't 5% of what needs to be put down. How do we increase that amount? Maybe we don't have as many participants, but we increase that amount so that others can actually get into the program and buy. So instead of having, say, 100 people, you get 50, but you double it. Because I don't know that that would be enough today to purchase anything when you're looking at $600,000 houses or even $450,000 houses, $11,000. So that's the question. How does the down payment keep up with the inflation piece in the property purchases?
I will say that the One Plus Lowell program would be the alternative and we really need to, you know, get more funding and get the city to invest in that program. I mean, it's been four years, you all have heard me up here, you know, just asking for more funding. We do have lenders that are invested in the city of Lowell, national lenders such as Eastern Bank that wants to support us. However, it costs them a ton of money to put the infrastructure in place in order to get this done. So I would say to you that yes, you're correct, the $11,000 is like pennies in a bucket at, you know, in this market. However, it does help, right, with closing costs and such things. So I think it's different layering of down payment assistance programs, but the One Plus Lowell program is the one that we really need to push forward and incentivize that program even more with different funding sources. Those funding sources, I don't know what's available, but, you know, I've been in talks with the city manager and with Ms. Byas Rose in regards to supporting this program. I would say that maybe, I don't even want to say it out loud, but I'll say if there's any opera funds that we can throw this way, great. If you have any, I don't know. Home opera might be an alternative and absolutely I'll be going back to the CPA committee to ask for funding. So to your point, I mean, it's really been hard. It hasn't been as successful as it has been in prior years in regards to getting people to really take advantage of the down payment assistance program through home funds for many different reasons. One being the cost, but that's not the sole problem of this program not being used by our Lowell residents.
That was the reason behind the motion was to provide the data so that we could look at the numbers and say, okay, is this something that we're gonna actually? We talk a lot about affordable housing, but how do we get to that point? How do we get that down payment that actually is gonna give us the opportunity even to purchase the affordable housing? Because if you're at a minimum wage job or a little bit more than that, how do you actually, even with this down payment, it's still not enough to even get to the stage where you're actually someone who can purchase it? So that's the question back and forth. How do we accomplish that and how do we raise this $11,000 and get it to something so people can actually be able to get into a home and have those monies? Because if you're using it all at one point, you're not really, it's not affordable anymore.
No.
It's not doing its job.
Yeah, I agree with you in regards to the down payment assistance. You're right, it's not working and we really need to incentivize One Plus Lowell and really fund that program. That would incentivize people. I shared an example of a current person that's purchasing here in Lowell with the purchase price of $358,000. We were able to layer different programs and was, she was able to receive over $100,000 just to purchase one of these units in thousand dollars just to purchase one of these units in the city of Lowell to make it affordable, and she's a single-headed household, and she has an elderly father and, you know, a couple of children. So that's what we, as Merrimack Valley, you said, what is Merrimack Valley Housing Partnership doing in your motion? That is what we do. We bring those type of skills, those resources outside of the city of Lowell to residents of Lowell, including the down payment assistance with the city of Lowell. So that's how we make dreams come true.
I hope I didn't say that. I thought the motion said, request the city manager to provide current data on regarding...
Well, you know, well, current data, what we do, like, you know, that's what we do.
You know, even five percent of that three hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars is seventeen thousand dollars, so it's almost eighteen thousand dollars. So that, that's where the question comes in. We're not even giving you enough to get to a bank and say, okay, because most of the people who are looking for affordable don't have large bank accounts. So that's the question. How do we put two people together and say, maybe we can't give out forty, but we can give out twenty and double it and actually put people in a place where we're getting to the people we're trying to reach? And that, that was really what, I was looking for the data to do, that's all.
No, I'm just taking this moment, you know, so I can put One Plus Lowell. But I will say that home rules has a lot of regulations, and it doesn't allow you to exceed a certain threshold, so it's not so much the home, I know everyone's tired, but it doesn't allow you to exceed the threshold. So you can exceed using home funds more than eleven thousand eight hundred because it has a threshold. So to the answer, you cannot go up with home funds, but we maybe could look at other funding sources.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, could you have a conversation back and forth and see how we can maybe work to increase and figure, maybe one way or the other? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. Counsel, we've been having these discussions on how to kind of cap over this eleven thousand, and one of the pieces is what counsel Noon has brought up, as well as all the council has supported, that the homeowner trust fund. So it'd be my hope in the coming meetings that we'll be discussing something to that effect and have something for you, for the council to probably digest previously before we actually talk about it. But this conversation, I cannot thank Ms. Mercado enough for her expertise, her assistance, and fully understanding how to get this accomplished. But I think there might be an opportunity at the request of this council to continue to moving forward, especially with, I know counsel Noon's been, been talking about this, I think, for about four or five years now. But we are trying to work into that direction, and I hope One Plus Lowell, as well as the trust fund, is something, an idea that we could move forward on.
I just want to say thank you, counsel Getchere, for having me here in order for me to speak and say that, what we do, so I appreciate your motion. Thank you all. Good night.
Counsel Yem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also would like to thank Kathy for what you've done, and I also was part of the VHP before Kathy was the directors, and I was privileged to teach a class in Khmari for Cambodian family. The city of Lowell spends some money, part of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, to fund this project. So I would encourage you to maybe have more discussion about this in a housing subcommittee. We will have it, I believe, August thirteenth, so, but we have agendas already, but if future, we can add more discussion at the housing subcommittee as well. Just for the point of view, meant for the point of information for people at home, VHP is one of the component that will help first-time home buyer to buy a house, affordable house, to live in the city of Lowell. Other, other projects, other companies, other entity, nonprofit, they also providing a down payment assistance. I was reached by a mortgage company recently that they're willing to give the first-time home buyer up to thirty-four thousand dollars for down payment assistance if they purchase a home to live in. In any city, there's no restriction, so I will share that with you of this company, Kathy. I just received it. So there's a lot, other program that's similar like this to help first-time home buyer. So we need to capture and take advantage of all these program that's out there. So maybe we'll talk more in the housing subcommittee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Back to motion response A, Western Ave, counsel Robinson.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone that's continuing to sit at the table and plug away on this. I'm looking forward to seeing what comes out of these discussions. Thank you very much.
Motion response, oh, go ahead, counsel Chow.
Mr. Mayor, before we continue on with the communication, this happened to me once or twice, we're reaching almost ten o'clock. Just want to ask through you to the manager, I don't think we're going to finish the agenda during the regular meeting right now. Is there any items that are of urgent in nature, time-sensitive, that we need to address tonight before we reach ten o'clock?
CFO, or what's the manager?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through to the council. I would say, counsel, it's the council's decision, obviously, if we want to take the votes out of order, and there are a couple of union contracts here that we've settled as well. We also have an executive session. We have two pieces on the executive session. As far as the remaining pieces, we can hold over our responses and bring them back would be fine, if that would be the will of the body, given the, given the lateness, the lateness of the evening, but, and the two executive session pieces that I believe are valuable to bring up. But whatever the will of the body is, once again, motions B, C, all the way through J, I can hold those if you desire, and we can answer those at our next, we can just add on if that's the wish of the body.
All right, so let's do five point two.
Mr. Mayor, can we do five, two, and then bundle six, one to six?
By counsel Dakota, seconded by counsel Getchere, all in favor say aye, opposed motion passes five point two, communication, appointment of Amy Lombardo to the Board of Assessors. Motion to adopt by counsel Noon, seconded by counsel Janess. Roll call, counsel clerk. Counsel Mersey.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson. Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Dakota.
Yes.
Counsel Getchere.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Voting the city manager, motion to bundle six point one, vote to accept, get the five hundred dollars from Robert Bassett for Lowell High School project. Is that five hundred or five hundred million, Mr. Manager? Five hundred? Okay, all right, yeah. Six point two, vote to accept expense thirty-nine thousand one hundred municipal local security grant. Six point three, vote to approve ORR permit for Thursday first. Six point four, vote to ratify and approve the execution by city manager of MOU with MVEA unit two. Six point five, ratify and approve the execution of the city manager of MOU with MVEA unit two P. Need a motion to adopt by counsel Robinson, seconded by counsel Noon. Roll call. Counsel Mersey.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Chow.
Yes.
Counsel Dakota.
Yes.
Counsel Getchere.
Yes.
Counsel Janess.
Yes.
Of three ordinances, all being referred to a public hearing. Eight point one, ordinance to amend chapter two sixty-six forty-three, special speed regulations. Eight point two, amend chapter fifty, officers and employees. Eight point three, amend chapter fifty-six, director of elections. All these will be referred to a public hearing on August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at seven PM. And the motion by counsel. Janess, seconded by counsel Robinson. Roll call.
Can I recuse myself from eight point two, please?
Eric, counsel Getchere, recuse himself from eight point two. Eight point two, okay. Eight point three as well.
Eight three as well.
Okay. Do the national, eleven point three for public hearing, eleven point three to eleven. Yeah, I'm sorry, we also have a couple more. We have, I'm going to skip quickly, petitions, we have three petitions for the same public hearing on August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Eleven and three, national grid, request permission to install one jail pole on Quebec Street. Boston, eleven point four, Boston Gas DBA National Grid, request installation of a replacement, six-inch plastic gas main on Powell Street. Eleven point five, Boston Gas DBA National Grid, request installation of replacement two-inch plastic gas main on Appleton Street, all the same for a public hearing on August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Roll call, counsel clerk. No roll call. No roll call, great, all right. Even on the eight? One, eight, two, eight, three, all good? All good, yeah. Who made the motion? Who made these last motions? Section ten, we had counsel Mersey and counsel Robinson. Section ten reports, ten point one, wire inspection, TC Systems, DBA AT&amp;T, request installation of conduit to extend small cell network on Gorm Street. Motion to accept and adopt accompanying order by counsel Yem, seconded by counsel Robinson. All in favor say aye, opposed motion passes. Ten point two, wire inspection, national grid, request installation of handhole with crush stone at one fifty-five Middlesex Street. Motion to accept and adopt accompanying order by counsel Chow, seconded by counsel Dakota. All in favor say aye, opposed motion passes. We have seven property claims, eleven point one, claim seven. Motion to refer to law department for report and recommendation by counsel Getchere, seconded by counsel Janess, all in favor say aye, opposed motion passes. Eleven point two, or to care of. Eleven, three, four, and five are all good. So what do we want to do? Do you send all the responses back for two weeks? Or you want to bank something out now? Two other motion responses, yeah. Three weeks away. Three weeks away. Yeah, yeah, next meeting. Okay, all right, next meeting, all right, fine. The last thing of the, so we'll, motion to kick it to eight thirteen by counsel Getchere, seconded by counsel Janess, all in favor say aye, opposed motion passes. And lastly, executive session, twelve point one. Executive session, discuss management litigation, open mean complaint, public discussion of which may have a detrimental effect on the city's position. And two, executive session, to consider and discuss the disposition of parcels within the Hamilton County District, public discussion of which may have a detrimental effect of negotiating position of the city. Motion to enter into executive session and adjourn from that session by counsel Getchere, seconded by counsel Janess. Mr. Clerk, roll call. Counsel Mersey.
Yes.
Counsel Noon.
Yes.
Counsel Robinson.
Yes.
Mayor Rourke.
Yes.
Counsel Scott.
Yes.
Counsel Yem.